Good evening. I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for August 21st, 2023. It's been a fast summer and here we are, just a few more days before the first day of school. Hopefully, everyone has had some time to enjoy vacation, spend time with family and friends, and maybe catch up on a special project. With the new school year around the corner, there are many exciting opportunities ahead for developing skills, making new friends, and continuing to grow closer towards our future goals. As a school division, we remain dedicated to supporting student success. On a personal note and in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to share that last week I was found in violation of not having a disclosure statement on my campaign signs, the "Authorized by Laurel Garalts" by the State Board of Elections. I appreciate Mr. Peterson for bringing this to light. I know I'd already let each of my board members know, but I felt it was important to share in this public forum as well. The signs have been fixed, and I apologize for the error. Now, let me read our mission statement. "The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future." Next, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Tenley Frederickson. Come on up, a fifth-grade student at Coventry Elementary. Coventry Elementary School is proud to have Tenley Frederickson represent our school as the August pledge leader. Tenley is a rising fifth-grader, and she's an excellent representation of the traits we want our Coventry Cougars to display. Tenley embodies our positive behavior expectations of practicing safety, acting responsibly, working hard, and showing respect. Outside of school, Tenley is very involved with the Arthritis Foundation, volunteering and being recognized as a youth honoree. She loves to go on family walks with her dog Honey and likes to play soccer with her friends. Tenley is a student who strives to make a positive impact at our school and in our community. We look forward to celebrating her accomplishments in her final year as a Coventry Cougar. Please stand as Tenley leads us in our pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Tenley. We're going to move into our awards and recognitions, and I'd like to move Item E up because she's our youngest guest tonight, and we want to make sure that she can get home. So, we're going to move our York Foundation for Public Education Presentation of Awards to Tenley, up to this portion.
Ms. Bonnie Gray, YFPE Liaison will step forward to present a special gift from Cookie Text, an edible tweet, on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education, to the pledge leader, Tenley Frederickson, who will also receive a Walmart gift card donated by a foundation supporter. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we're going to move into our introduction of new staff. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you introduce everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Garaltz, and good evening, board members. I want to introduce and share a few comments relating to the newest additions to our YCSD leadership team. When I say your name, please stand and remain standing. Dr. Dave Wrights, he is our new Chief Human Resource Officer. David served the York County School Division in multiple leadership roles since joining the division in 2016. Those roles include principal, director of elementary instruction, and most recently, director of leadership and accountability. Next, Michelle Huffstedler, please stand, Director of Leadership. Michelle started her career in education with Newport News Public Schools as a French teacher and as a lead teacher for school improvement. She has 18 years' experience as a school administrator in both Williamsburg-Jame City County Schools and Newport News Public Schools. She most recently served as Demby High School Principal. Next, we have Mr. James Riddick, Director of Transportation. And everyone needs to really look at his bow tie today. He's really awesome. Sorry for that. James brings over 32 years of transportation leadership experience, having served the last 10 years as supervisor of transportation operations with Newport News Public Schools. Command Sergeant Major Riddick is a United States Army veteran and a graduate of the Sergeant Major Academy. Next, we have Ms. Termaine Hopkins, Director of Special Education. Termaine began her career in education as a career switcher. She has served as a paraeducator, high school, special education teacher, testing coordinator, school improvement specialist, assistant principal, and most recently, she served as the principal at Waller Mill Elementary School. Next, we have Dr. Joy Richardson, Associate Director of Special Education. Joy started her career in education as a special education teacher in Prince William County. She has served as a special education coordinator, summer school principal, assistant director of student services, and acting director of student services. Since 2020, Joy served as the program coordinator and administrator for the Center for Autism at Newport Academy. Next, we have Dr. Wendy Nichols. She is the Associate Director of Human Resources. Wendy is a career switcher as well, who started in education as an elementary teacher with Newport News Public Schools. Dr. Nichols also served as a reading specialist and instructional supervisor for curriculum and development for the past, I'm sorry, for the past 12 years, Wendy served as an elementary, middle, and high school principal. Next, we have Ms. Krista Brownlee, new principal at William, William, how about Waller Mill Elementary School? Sorry. Where am I? It's her 20th school. Krista started her career in education as a special education K-3 teacher with Wilson County Schools in North Carolina. She also served as a special education teacher in K-8 settings, a fifth-grade teacher, and a K-5 literacy specialist with Hampton City Schools. Since 2019, she has served as an assistant principal at Grafton Middle and Yorktown Middle School. Next, we have Mr. Aaron McQuillan, new Bruton High School principal. Aaron started his career as a high school English teacher with Hampton City Schools. He then taught English at Grafton High School for seven years. He served as an assistant principal with the division at the elementary and high school levels. Next, we have Ms. Heather Roberts, new elementary school assistant principal at McGruder. She started her career as a classroom teacher for Hampton City Schools. Since then, Heather has been a 21st-century out-of-school-time coordinator. Is that right? Okay. I've been in education 29 years, and I thought I knew it all. A reading specialist and has recently had the role of assessment and compliance coordinator for TAB Elementary School. Next, we have Ms. Ashley McLemore, Grafton Middle School Assistant Principal. She started her career in education as an adjunct English instructor at Thomas Nelson Community College. Since 2015, she has served as a language arts teacher and literacy support specialist with Hampton City Schools. Next, we have Dr. Robert Covington, Queens Lake Middle School Assistant Principal. Dr. Covington started his career as a high school teacher in Hanover County. He has served as a middle school and high school assistant principal in Virginia as well as New Jersey. Next, we have Dr. Valandra Walters, Queens Lake Middle School Assistant Principal. She started her career in education at Lafayette-Winona Middle School as a sixth-grade English teacher. She also served as an eighth-grade teacher, reading teacher, and adjunct composition instructor. Since 2017, she served as a reading and English middle school program specialist. Next, we have Ms. Ashley Shown. Did I say it right? She just got married, and let's give her a big round of applause. She literally just got back from her honeymoon. Welcome back. The honeymoon's over. Just kidding. Ashley started her career in education as a social studies teacher with Lynchburg City Schools. Since 2020, she has served as a teacher and assistant principal with Chesapeake Public Schools. Next, we have Ms. Renee Montecavallo. She is the new assistant principal at Yorktown Middle School. Renee started her career in education as a fifth-grade teacher with Henrico Public Schools. Since 2014, Renee has served as an elementary school teacher, middle school teacher, and administrative intern with New Kent Public Schools. Next, we have Mr. Dennis Olenkoffer, new assistant principal at TAB High School. Dennis began his career in education as a graduation coach with Newport News City Schools. Since 2017, he served as a special education teacher at Menchville High School. Dennis also serves as a non-commissioned officer in the Virginia Air National Guard, where he has received numerous commendations for outstanding leadership, professionalism, and dedication to duty. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Dorian Hart, new assistant principal at York High School. Dorian is an 18-year veteran high school health and physical education teacher for Newport News Public Schools with a certification in administration and supervision K-12 as of March 2020. Please join me in giving these folks a warm welcome to YCSD. We're excited for all of you.
Dr. Shandor and I are going to go down front. I think Mr. Richardson's going to read some awards.
So, the Virginia Board of Education has announced the 2022-23 Exemplar Performance Awards, recognizing schools or school divisions that exceed board-established requirements or show continuous improvement on academic and school quality indicators, and schools, school divisions, and school boards that implement effective innovative practices. The awards are based on performance and practice during the 2021-22 school year. The York County School Division is one of just seven school divisions in the Commonwealth to receive the Innovative Practice Award from the Virginia Department of Education through the Exemplar Performance Awards Program. YCSD was recognized for providing STEM-focused curriculum in our elementary and middle schools, including our maker spaces, summer enrichment camps, career exploration, and STEM-related club activities. So, accepting the award on behalf of the division are Dr. Shandor and Ms. Garaltz. Congratulations. And next, we're going to move to the Highest Achievement Awards. And Mr. Myatt, if you can go down front for this one as well. So, Bethel Manor Elementary School and Seaford Elementary Schools met the criteria for the Highest Achievement Award. Only 48 schools in the state earned this recognition. To earn the award, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited and demonstrate a high levels of success across all of school quality indicators, including success and narrowing achievement gaps. Schools also had to meet the Level 1 accreditation benchmark for reading, mathematics, and science, based on the student pass rate, not including growth or progress on assessments taken by English-language learners. Schools must also have no more than 5% achievement gap for schools with two student groups, or 10% gap for schools with three or more student groups, between the lowest-performing group and all other students in the school. In addition, the schools must have achieved Level 1 on all other applicable school quality indicators. At this time, we ask the following administrators to step forward and accept the awards on behalf of their schools. Ms. Christina Wagner, Bethel Manor Elementary Principal, and Ms. Mindy Adams, Bethel Elementary Assistant Principal, and ACC Brittany Fitzke. And the next award goes to Seaford Elementary School, Ms. Barbara Nagle, principal, and Sheri Vandegrift, Seaford Elementary Assistant Principal. Now, we're going to move into the Continuous Improvement Award. If Mr. Higginbotham and Mr. Schaefer could go down front, please. Coventry Elementary and Bruton High School received the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. To receive this recognition, a school can be accredited and must meet identified criteria. Coventry was selected for demonstrating an increase in the combined rate of two or more student groups in reading and math for each of the past three accreditation years, with a total increase across the three years of 10 points or more. Bruton was selected for demonstrating an increase in the graduation and completion index and a decrease in the dropout rate for three accreditation years. The Exemplar Performance School Awards replaced the Virginia Index of Performance Program to recognize schools exceeding state accreditation standards and making continuous improvement and narrowing achievement gaps. At this time, we'd ask that the following administrators step forward to accept the awards on behalf of their schools. And for Coventry Elementary, Ms. Lisa Jollimo and Mr. Todd Miller, Coventry Elementary Assistant Principal. Ms. Jollimo is the principal. And now, if we could have Mr. Aaron McQuillan, Bruton High School Principal, Ms. Arletha Dockery, outgoing Bruton High School Principal, and Bruton High School Assistant Principals, Mr. Van Jones and Ms. Michelle Johansson come forward. Now, we'd like to announce the Virginia Council on Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children presentation. We have a very special presentation this evening, and to share the significance of this award, I will read the March 22nd news release from Virginia Governor Glenn Youngkin. Has appointed York County School Division Superintendent Victor Shandor to the State Advisory Board. Dr. Shandor will serve as the Division Superintendent on the Virginia Council on Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. The Virginia Council was created in 2009 by the General Assembly to assist in easing the transition of the children of military families into school as a result of frequent moves and deployment of their parents. "I am honored to represent York County as a member of the Virginia School Council," said Dr. Shandor. "As the son of a former military service member, I am deeply grateful the sacrifices our military families take for our country. I look forward to working with other members of the council and support the military community. As a school division comprising approximately 31% military-connected students, YCSD schools have earned recognition for their commitment to meeting military families' needs while also providing resources and programming related to transitions and academic planning. The division has also been selected to host the 2023 Department of Defense Educational Activity, DODIA Mid-Atlantic Regional Meeting, beginning in March 27th. The DODIA is charged with the responsibility and privilege of educating the children of our nation's military. Dr. Shandor, by representing the York County School Division on this council, you will be an important voice for our military families, and we're so proud that you were appointed to serve on this advisory board. I understand you will be meeting with the council in October, and we are so excited to hear more about the work on this council in the days ahead, as well as the positive impact it will have upon our military community. Congratulations." I'll turn the recognitions back over to our board chair.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. All right. All right. We would now like to recognize two special people who are leaving YCSD to pursue different paths, and although we will miss them greatly, we are proud of their accomplishments and are confident they will continue to do amazing things for students as they serve in other capacities. On behalf of the school board, we will be presenting each of them with a small token of appreciation and recognition of their service to YCSD. First, I will ask Dr. Tony Vlado to step forward as I share a few comments. Dr. Tony Vlado began his career with YCSD in 2008 at York High School as an assistant principal, which he continued until July 2012, when he left YCSD to serve as a principal in another division. Dr. Vlado returned to YCSD in 2015 as a Director of Secondary Instruction and held that role until 2019, when he began serving as the Chief Human Resources Officer. Tony remained in that role until July 31st of this year. As of August 1st, Dr. Vlado started in his new position as the Superintendent of Gloucester County Public Schools. We all know that he will be an outstanding and highly effective superintendent. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Vlado as he steps into this new position.
So, Dr. Vlado, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for the school division here in York County and your commitment to education. I remember when you were assistant principal at York High School when my kids were there, and then you moved on to bigger and better things, and came back to bigger and better things here in York County. Now, you're moving on to bigger and better things in Gloucester. But, good luck to you, and I know you'll do well.
Thank you. I want to thank the school board as well for all the confidence in me and the opportunity to serve the students and parents of the York County School.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, you're going to share about our next recipient, although she isn't here.
Yep. Mrs. Dockery isn't here, but Mrs. Arletha Dockery started her career with YCSD in 2013 as an assistant principal at York High School. She continued in that role until July of 2015, when she began to be the principal of Bruton High School. Arletha served as a BHS principal until August 1st of this year. In the next phase of her career journey, Mrs. Dockery will be using her vast experience to serve as the Director of Human Resources with West Point School Division. Please join me in congratulating Arletha as she embraces this new and exciting opportunity. She was also the principal of two of my children. Yeah, no, three. Three of my kids. Okay. Yeah, there we go. But, congratulations, Mrs. Dockery. She'll do a fine job there.
Next, we're going to move into our Accent on Academics. Dr. Shandor.
All right. Good evening again, Ms. Garaltz, and board members. For this evening's Accent on Academics, information will be shared regarding our Summer Academy 2023. Summer Academy is designed to provide students with a variety of engaging educational activities aimed at not only preventing summer learning loss, but also fostering a love for learning outside of the traditional school year. This summer, YCSD offered a variety of camps that allowed students to explore their interests while also trying something new. Recognizing the pivotal role families play in a student's educational journey, the school division also provided summer opportunities for families to learn together. Tonight, Dr. Bob Sherlock, Associate Director of Secondary Instruction and Academic Programs, along with invited guests, will provide an overview of the 2023 Summer Academy Program. Dr. Sherlock.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Tonight, we'll be showcasing YCSD summer programs, which will include our Summer Academy, summer camps, and our family engagement events. So, first, I'd like to start with our Elementary School Summer Academy. Dr. Horrell and Ms. King hosted these at Dare and McGruder Elementary. We had 583 students being served at those two schools. That's up 71 students from last year, so we're definitely making an impact and popularity with our students. We also hosted the ESY, or Extended School Year Program, at both those sites, led by Ms. Thackery. The program centered around a number of key strategies. First, a positive relationship. First, I'd like you to just look at those pictures. I visited classrooms quite a bit, and those pictures represent what you'd see on a normal day of those 20 days of Summer Academy. Smiles, not just from kids, but from teachers as well. Both Ms. King and Dr. Horrell, they did a great job as far as just getting that, and all the staff, as far as getting the culture to really be fun and engaging in a learning environment. Also, that engaging culture led to, or helped support reinforcing the English and math skills to make sure those students are prepared for the next grade level, and really using the collective commitment of every single staff member to make sure that all students at the elementary level had those engaging experiences, which again led to those successes that we saw in those classes. For our middle school program, Ms. Harrison led this as principal at Yorktown Middle for Summer Academy. We served 121 students during those five weeks of Summer Academy. And again, very similar to the elementary program, she built in positive relationships through the theme of "Welcome to Paradise." She wanted to make sure the kids didn't feel like they're going to five more weeks. I mean, they were, but she wanted to really set them up for success where they're excited about going to school. And again, through the variety of staff and teachers, they created that engaging culture through that theme, and they also used PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, to really make sure kids were rewarded for doing what's right. We also had the ESY program, the Extended School Year program, there as well. Again, that program, students worked on skills that were related to their IEP. At the high school level, Ms. Harless and Ms. McNally led this program, where we, nearly 500, it's 400 and, let me check my notes, 488 credits were earned, both a combination between original credit and credit recovery. And again, what a great opportunity for students to both advance in those original credit and to make up those credits for when, again, they wanted, when students need to make up those credits for graduation. The best part was August 28th. We had seven graduates walk that stage, go through that finish line, and receive their high school diploma. Again, that was a great event for families and, of course, the students as well. I would like to say, all in all, through both the elementary, middle, and high school programs, Summer Academy programs, we served 1,098 kids, right? So, five weeks of programs that they would not have normally gotten elsewhere. So, I think that's a great accomplishment for our staff and for our sites. We didn't stop there, though. At the high school level, we wanted to make sure kids were prepared for those rigorous courses, and so, we had nearly 150 students participate in Advanced Placement Boot Camp, right, AP Boot Camp. Think about taking your first AP, a rigorous course, maybe you're a rising ninth grader, taking human geography. You've never seen that course before, right? Or it might be a first AP class you're taking, AP Calc, AP Physics, and you need to see a little bit of what that looks like. Teachers were, it was virtual, but teachers did go through the rigor and kind of what that course would look like over four sessions, it took about 10 hours, to kind of guide those kids through those programs. In addition, we hosted a total of four sessions of PSAT and SAT prep courses, again, to really give students those strategies to be successful at those high stakes tests for our students. Ms. Fitzke is going to be talking about our Summer Camp program.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Fitzke, and I had the privilege of leading the Elementary Summer Academy enrichment camps this summer, along with Mr. Brian Roberts, who led our middle school camps. Throughout the summer, we had three-week, two-week, and one-week camps, as you can see listed here, and they offered a variety of opportunities for our students to engage in some different educational and exciting experiences. So, some things that students may have never tried before, or some things that students really wanted to enhance on their skills. One of the things that we experienced with the sixth-grade math prep was for students that were rising sixth graders, that were going to be enrolled in pre-algebra six. And these students, we had about 70 students interested in this camp. We were able to accommodate about 50, and one of the culminating events was for students to solve algebraic equations in order to find the answers to the ingredients in a recipe to make Play-Doh. And so, that's the first picture that you see is one of their final events of the camp. We also had a Reader's Theater Camp, where students were practicing fluency and expression by reading scripts, plays, poems, that they got to share with each other, and then also in front of their different groups of classes. We had a variety of camps that students got to explore, and one of my personal favorite parts of the camps was being able to make those connections and relationships. I got to meet a few different teachers from across the division that ran our camps and be able to build those connections with them, as well as the staff at Dare Elementary, where the camps were hosted, the secretary, the custodians, and our bus drivers as well, who all kind of worked together to make sure that the camps were successful for our students. And then, also seeing the student relationships and the bonds that some of the students had. A few of them continued on. They did two or three camps throughout the summer, and they were able to build those friendships across the division, which was really impactful. And it was just great to see the different experiences that students were provided, that they may not have gotten otherwise throughout our camps. But, I'd like to turn it over to a few of our campers. So, first, Grace Tomlin, who was part of the chess and So first, Grace Tomlin, who was part of the Chess and Computer Science Camp.
So the best part about the chess camp is you had to do a tournament, and you had a chance to win a trophy. And I liked that. And my favorite part is I got to win a chessboard to help me teach my dad how to play chess. And I did Makerspace. Makerspace, we did, we did Scratch, and we did, Scratch is when we like program to make games and stuff. And we did Last Pass is if your password is weak or not.
Thank you, Grace. I'd like to welcome Eden and Jack Braxton, who were part of the World Language Camps.
Hello, I'm Jack.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Eden.
At World Language Camp, I liked the activities and games. I learned letters, colors, and I learned how to count in Spanish by keeping a balloon up in the air. This is my first time learning a different language.
My favorite part of World Language Camp for middle schoolers was the international snacks. It gave me the opportunity to taste popular foods from different parts of the world. My brother and I practiced Spanish at home and in the car.
Gracias.
Merci.
Next, I'd like to welcome Kayden Griffin, who is going to speak to our middle school band camps.
Good evening. My name is Kayden Griffin, and I am a seventh grader at Queens Lake Middle School, and I attended summer band camp. We had the opportunity to work with three other middle school band instructors and one high school instructor. One of the middle school instructors was my band teacher, Ms. Ronkowski. Mr. Jarvis was the high school instructor, who will also be my band teacher when I get to Bruton. Every day, we split up into sections based on our instrument to practice our music. We learned three songs in two weeks, and on the last day of camp, we performed the songs we learned in a concert for our parents. I enjoy being able to meet and work with other middle school band students, especially those that play saxophone like me.
Thanks, Brayden. All the students, I think, had a great time. My son was also in the Chess and the Computer Science Corps, so it was kind of fun hearing the different perspective of Grace. So our final item we'll be talking about for summer programs is our Family Engagement Night. I guess I am so proud of both Ms. Roberts and Ms. Fitzki for the work they did with this, along with our staff. We did a variety of different events, as you can see there, from elementary to secondary, where the goal really was to not just have kids come to our campuses, but their families, their grandparents, the guardians, the parents, and not do things separately in two different rooms, but work on things together. And so another additional item we wanted to work with is building our community partners. We worked with Mariners Museum, NASA, Bayport Federal Credit Union, and the Yorktown Libraries to really make sure that it's not just YCSD doing these items, but it's the entire community that are working on these family engagement items. And again, you see some pictures there from a variety of our events. However, I thought it would be better to hear right from the parents themselves. So I do have a mom and a dad of two parents who will talk about three of these events that they went through.
Good evening. Hi. We are an active-duty Air Force family, and this is our first summer here, so we participated in all the things. We did the math captivating cards at Dare Elementary, and we continue to still, at home, play the math games that we learned. I liked how the facilitator, she walked around, she offered tips, and answered any of our questions. Our son, Jack, who was here, he loves to play games, and so we were able to connect with him that way. We also attended the Bingo for Books. Each of our children won two books by playing bingo. We loved that there was a reading specialist there that gave us little lessons on phonetics, because a lot of times, you know, parents, we don't know these things. So, you know, she's giving us these tips, so it's awesome. Oh, and also, the Therapy Dogs Paws for Reading was there, and that was really cool to see them.
Good evening. We also attended the NASA STEM Night. We got to meet all the engineers that were there. A lot of them were women, which is a positive role model for my daughter, who is also aspiring to be an engineer. They had a lot of learning activities. One of the activities they had was that we built a satellite with Legos, and we had to calculate the payload weight and the power usage for those. And then we got to go outside and look at the surface of the sun using various telescopes and binoculars. It was a great experience for the family. You know, we really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I do want to thank the Board for continuing to support these summer programs, and a big special thanks to all of the teachers and support staff who came together during the, you know, during summer vacation to come and do those kind of programs for our parents and for our families and for our kids. So I just want to thank all of them as well for that. This concludes our presentation on the 2023 Summer Academy and Programs. We are happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you very much.
I just think it needs to be noted how many different opportunities parents, community members, and students had between traditional academics and credit recovery that typically happens, but now the extensions and all the different enrichments that we offer. And then you see the type of support and outpouring we get from the community at those events. Like, I remember hearing about the Bingo for Books. You know, we were thinking 50, 60 people, and you filled up the room, you know, with like double that. So I just think it's a wonderful, you know, opportunity, and to see how it's grown from what we had before COVID, then during COVID, and how it's just sort of blown up here is fantastic to see those, and to see the students, you know, come here and talk about their, you know, favorite opportunities and what they did and what they learned, and then hearing that they all took at home, you know, and were doing those things at home to engage their families with. It's just wonderful. So it wasn't a question, but I just wanted to talk about how incredible those opportunities are, because there are a lot of places that are yearning for that and don't have the means for it.
Can I say, so on all those programs, the credit recovery and the original credit, those were a cost for families, but everything else, elementary, middle, the camps, all those family engagement, were totally free, no cost to our families or our kids. So again, another positive thing that we're bringing to our folks.
I just think it's awesome, the number of students that came out. And it must be kind of fun when you have the middle school Summer Academy, and it's paradise. That's kind of surprising. But I did have a question, because I saw the band camp, and I'm in the band. And how many kids were at the band camp, would you say, roughly?
Eighty.
Wow.
Oh, that's great.
That is. That's awesome. That's really good.
That's cool.
Okay. The other question is, who liked the chess club?
Yeah.
There you go. Now, did you learn how to play, or what was it?
I learned how to play.
You already knew how? Or you learned how?
She learned.
Ah.
That's cool.
We want to know if you beat your dad, though.
It's all part of the plan.
He says yes.
Just another comment. It's certainly important for the Summer Academy and the summer camps for the students, but more importantly, the family engagement nights. That's the real important aspect that brings the family in together. And, you know, the PTA has always tried to do it here and there in their schools, and they do a great job at it, they still do, when they do, you know, family event nights. But for us as a division to also institute that as well, I think is great. We need to continue that. So good job. Thank you.
Absolutely. And it's not a one-off. As you probably know, all of these, the camps and all the other instruction, if you will, these are all threads that permeate through the curriculum, and also the operational framework, particularly career connections up and down all grade levels and applicable to all families and all students. So hats off to you guys. It's wonderful.
And to our new family, welcome to YCSD. I'm grateful that you jumped in right away and got involved. I think I've said it one million times up here, but just parental and family involvement is so important for student success, and we're grateful that you jumped in with both feet. And now you've probably met a lot of great families and a lot of great kids that you're able to connect with before that school year started, so.
And thanks for your service. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for a great presentation, everybody. Appreciate it. All right. We're going to take a short recess to meet tonight's award recipients, and then we'll give them an opportunity to take photos as well, and then we'll reconvene in a meeting after that. We will now reconvene the business portion of the meeting. We'll begin with unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our presentations. And the first, we have American Rescue Plan, the SRR3 Grant update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Geraltz. Board members, Dr. Vika Stevenson, our grant coordinator, writer, will share an update on the American Rescue Plan, SRR3 Grant. Dr. Stevenson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I have the pleasure of providing an update on the York County School Division's American Rescue Plan Act, SRR3 Plan. As you recall, the purpose of the SRR3 Fund is to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impacts of COVID-19 on the nation's students by addressing academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. Tonight, I'll provide you a brief update on the implementation of our SRR3 Plan, as well as a few highlights from the FY23 academic year. As a reminder, the SRR3 Plan consists of three categories. The first category is addressing unfinished learning, which requires that at least 20% of the total grant award be allocated to address the academic impact of lost instructional time through the implementation of evidence-based interventions. As I shared in February, we far exceed this requirement as we continue to prioritize student learning. The second category is the Other Uses of Funds category, which includes all other items that are not reserved directly to address unfinished learning. It is intended that a large part of the grant be allocated to address areas of need as identified by the Board and the YCSD community. The third category is the Prevention and Mitigation Strategy category, which may include the purchase of PPE and supplies, as well as other mitigation measures as appropriate. Next, I'll share with you an update on our SRR3 Plans. Since the inception of the SRR3 Grant in 2021, the Division has been diligent in utilizing grant funding to support the goals of the grant and the needs of our School Division. In the past, I've shared any proposed updates to the allocations for each respective category. As we are beginning our last year of the SRR3 Grant, our focus is on final spending and reimbursement per state and federal guidelines. As a reminder, these funds are awarded on a one-time basis and are to be fully expended by September 30th, 2024. To date, we are on track with our spending plan and expect to meet the September 30th, 2024 deadline for reimbursements. In my next several slides, I'll provide you a brief update on the staff positions that are included within the FY24 Grant Plan, as well as a few highlights of other grant-funded projects. As I shared with you in our previous updates, the SRR3 Plan includes additional positions to address areas of unfinished learning and provide needed support to specialized populations. In this final year of our SRR3 Grant, there are six positions that are to be grant-funded. allocations for these staff positions have been updated to reflect the Board's most recent pay plan and costs associated with benefits. Throughout FY24, the Division staff will review these grant-funded positions and determine next steps for funding beyond this school year. In my next few slides, I'm going to share with you a few highlights of programs and supports funded through our SRR3 Grant Program. This past school year, the Division was able to utilize SRR funds as planned to purchase devices to support our Division's one-on-one technology program, so we're really happy to be able to extend that through the SRR3 funds. This year, we were also able to purchase science read aloud texts to support K-5 classrooms with integrating science and STEM-related content within their literacy block instruction. Teachers will be receiving professional development on best practices for utilizing these texts throughout their instruction this year. We were also able to send a cohort of school leaders to receive training by our partners at CERN, the College of William and Mary. Division staff are excited to bring additional training opportunities to school leaders this school year. And for the past two years, the Division has provided letters training, which supports the science of reading, to help kindergartners through second grade, teachers align their instruction to research-based practices. The science of reading is supported by the Virginia Department of Education as a focus for literacy instruction across the state. Last year, we had 80 participants in Volume 1, and have provided extended training in Volume 2 for 21 of our reading specialists and Division literacy coaches. We are pleased to share that the Division will continue offering letters training for selected staff through the FY24 academic year. And as you heard earlier from Dr. Sherlock's presentation, we were able to utilize SRR3 fundings to provide a very robust Summer Academy Program. We're very proud to provide those opportunities to our students and to our families. So following this board update, the revised SRR3 Plan reflecting the date of this board update will be posted to the Division website, and will continue implementing the plan as described here tonight. As required, we'll also continue to conduct periodic reviews of the SRR3 Plan and provide these updates to the Board and community. I will come back to you again in February, and then our final presentation next August. And we will review our Return to Safe in Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan, which is currently available on the Division's website. And at this time, I do welcome any questions that you have regarding our SRR3 Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Questions?
I'll go first. All right. Dr. Stevenson, there's supposed to be at least 20% of the money was supposed to go to unfinished learning, remediation, those kinds of things. What was our percentage in New York County School District?
So I referred back to Slide 4. We are just above 50% with our allocation to address unfinished learning, so we far exceed the required 20%.
So we're two and a half times what was required.
Yes, sir.
Okay. To bring students up to par as far as learning. Also, I've seen elementary science readers. Those are awesome. And the letters training, I mean, I think every meeting that we've had, I've said how awesome of a program that is, and the science of reading is what we should be doing. And it makes the world a difference, both to the teachers and to the students. So I do thank you for that.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think to tag along with that, like, in my experience in education, seeing that letters training, it's no joke either. Like, the training, it's difficult. It takes time and effort, and to see the people put that time and effort, but then put it in practice in the classroom is the key there, and they want to continue to do that, despite how, you know, the time it takes to learn that and be trained for that, then they recruit other people to come and do it, and then help their cohorts in the classroom. So I think that letters training.
It is quite rigorous.
Yeah, fantastic. Yeah, very rigorous. So thank you. And I just want to appreciate, or just thank you for all the presentations you've done from when the SRR funds started coming in, with all of your presentations, and how clear and concise you share the information with us, anyone who's watching, the constituents at home, to how we're using these funds to directly help the students in the classroom is key. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Mr. Richardson?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson.
Next, we'll move on to our staffing report. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, Dr. Dave Wrights, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is now going to provide a brief staffing report. Dr. Wrights.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I'm going to provide you some HR staffing updates and working conditions updates. On August 14th, YCSD welcomed 111 new teachers. This event was hosted at the Grafton Complex, and a mix of experience was present during the three days of PD. We had 21 brand-new teachers. We had six teachers, one to two years' experience, 19 teachers with three to five years' experience, 22 teachers with six to nine years' experience, and 43 teachers with 10-plus years' experience. The three days included sessions on HR matters, instructional practices, getting to know YCSD, and having some fun. An example of that fun is at the end of the first day, a pep rally was hosted by all four Zones cheer teams cheering each zone as the teachers played Minute to Win It games. In fact, each participant provided feedback to us how their experiences with YCSD has been after a three-day orientation, and how it related to the four priorities within our strategic plan that Ms. Golf talked to them and presented to them on the first day. I'm going to read you some of those highlights from the participants. So from the priority of highly effective talent, a participant said, "I was impressed by how many new teachers have 10-plus years' by how many new teachers have 10-plus-years experience, over 40. That shows me this is a desirable district with a strong enough pedagogy to attract highly experienced employees." Under the priority of supportive culture, a participant said, "All sessions I have attended made me feel welcome and that there is a strong support system at Y C S D." For collective commitment, "I love that Y C S D asks all the time, how can they support you?" And for future-ready graduate, "The use of technology and having a maker space gives students the knowledge that they need for the future. Teaching students about careers from pre-K toward forward is a great way to provide life skills." This slide shows our current position vacancies in all the areas of difficult-to-fill positions. If any of you watch the news, everyone knows that we are experiencing a national teacher shortage. And I'm happy to report, since Y C S D is a destination division, our current vacancies are minimal, and this in turn benefits our students because they will have a teacher dedicated to growing and supporting them throughout the year. As you can see, a comparison from last year, we are trending down with vacancies. In addition to the fall and spring jamborees, this past summer, we also offered job fairs, and that also attracted more applicants to Y C S D. Looking ahead, the HR department would like to supply employment information and materials to our schools, keeping our hiring practices ongoing throughout the year. Continuing our theme of improving our processes, on the consent part of our agenda tonight, a pay plan update closes gaps, ensuring equity within our region to continue to attract our highly effective talent. The update addresses van drivers, sub-bus drivers, records manager, manager of vehicle maintenance, in addition of a dive coach to support all four high schools. Before I begin to present the results of our recent working condition surveys, I would like to provide some background. Many years ago, Dr. Carroll and members of our Y R A and the principal advisory created a Y C S D working condition survey, in which the state later implemented a very similar survey, leading to our current working condition survey by V D O E. So Y C S D had a stakeholder input for many, many years. To do their jobs well and remain with us in York County, educators need a supportive school environment where they feel valued, trusted, and empowered in order to improve instruction. The data I'm sharing are the results of the survey administered to elementary and middle school teachers and staff. This slide indicates responses to the two following questions. "My school is a good place to work and learn," and "Over the last year, the working conditions for teachers in the school have improved." Elementary and middle school teachers reported higher level of agreement to these questions than both the region and the state. This is an important measurement, and our school principals are to be commended for improving the working conditions of staff above our region and state averages. This slide represents staff responses to the following three questions. "Overall, my school is a good place to work and learn." "Over the last year, the working conditions have improved." "And, over the last year, the overall climate for students in this school have improved." As you can see by the blue bars in these categories, our principals again should be commended for outperforming the region and the state. I do want to end this presentation with a little bragging of our data. In comparison to our region neighbors and where exactly our employees are coming from or going to work for is represented in the employee trends chart. The blue columns represent incoming employees from our regional divisions, and the green represents Y C S D employees transitioning to another division. As you can see from the data, we continue to be a destination division and a place where people want to work. As you heard from the comments from New Teacher Orientation earlier in my presentation, Y C S D is that destination division, and our focus on the strategic priorities, mission, and vision continue to guide our good work and dedication to the students of York County. This concludes my presentation of the 2023 HR staffing updates, and at this time, I will take any questions.
Yeah, I have a couple quick questions.
Sure.
When the climate survey is done in the spring of a school year, and then we get the data to start the new school year, but with the new teachers coming in, you showed the graphic of how many coming from different divisions. Have in any discussions or anything, was there talk of why these teachers were looking to leave, especially the ones who've been there 10-plus-years to come to Y C S D? What was offered that was enticing to them to move?
I think many, we have many things that we offer in York County. One is our climate, our support. Even with the new administrators that we have brought from Newport News or any of our surrounding districts, they just commend us on the fact that we listen, and, like I said, the respect that they're given for their craft and the opportunity that they can grow with us. So I think that is definitely something that they are attracted to. Also, many of our teachers love the fact that they can bring their own children to Y C S D, to go to many of our schools and get our education. And so it's just, there are many opportunities. We haven't sat down and 100% surveyed them, but just through conversations, through our principals, through interviews, that is our common theme.
Okay. And then another quick question. You showed the graphic of open, like, teaching positions or support positions with that, and that being trending lower than previous years, but is that, are other divisions, regional divisions around us, seeing similar trends where that's going down, or is that sort of out of the ordinary for us?
So I don't think it's out of the ordinary, basically, for the national teacher shortage, but if I talk to surrounding divisions, we do have, for instance, I have a friend who's also a director in a neighboring district, and there are over 100 teacher vacancies, and we've worked really hard to get a, someone in front of our children every day. And we most recently had all of our regular teaching positions filled, and so that allows our students to have someone consistent every day in front of them. And so we're just really excited about the trends that we're attracting, as you said earlier, and why teachers are coming to us.
Thank you.
You said that all of our regular classroom teachers are filled, so when you put the six up there, what would, can you tell us what those are, those six that are open?
So the six consist of E L teachers, two library media specialists, and, which are our librarians in our schools, and we also have some C T E positions.
Okay. And then the working condition survey, are we, when we get that information back, are we able to drill down by school? And then does that information go back to the principal for them to improve on specific things, or is it, we get it all, and it's all anonymous in a big clump, or is it drilled down by school?
That's a great question. So we get it by school. So the principals are able to look at that data, and a lot of times, we ask them to pick their top 10 and bottom 10, and those are the things that they work on with their staff. And so it is an opportunity for not only them to grow with their staff, but also to highlight some things they may not have seen happening in their building. So it is just a great opportunity for them to grow.
Absolutely. I know, I was at New Teacher Orientation, as were most of you, and just the energy in the room, it was really, really great. I think they were shocked to see board members there. I know the one woman said, "I never, I've worked at so-and-so school division for so many years, I never once saw a school board member." So I know for us, we're all wanting to be involved and out at schools, and I think that was very shocking to me.
I think it makes us unique, too, because we are all over the place.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a little anecdotal, but my experience with the teachers I spoke to, and I spoke, certainly over a dozen, particularly in District Five, they were mid-career, coming, you know, locally. And again, they reinforce what you mentioned, Dr. Wrights, is supportive environment, chance to grow, a safe environment. We all know that schools that are disciplined and accountable and organized are safer, and that was a key factor for several of them that spoke to me. The other critical piece, at least in my mind, is, from a staffing standpoint, is you have strong leadership, and you saw the strong leadership we introduced tonight, and we have strong existing leadership in our buildings, and you introduce capacity. Many divisions are in crisis. Many divisions are leaning back on levels of certification. They're leaning back on educational requirements. Folks accepting teachers without college degrees, perhaps an associate's degree. So many, many divisions, particularly in North Carolina and some in Virginia, are in crisis. We're not there. When we have capacity and you have leadership, you have a time, you have a chance to improve. And we get these positive surveys back, and we'll continue to try and improve. But none of this is an accident, and the numbers speak for themselves. So I was delighted to have the opportunity to attend the orientation, and people were more than willing, new teachers in particular, more than willing to share what attracted them to the division. So hats off to you guys, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, I had, I had a great time at the, at the New Teacher Orientation, and I remember from last year, we had 160 new teachers started. Okay? And this year was 111. And so that's totally bucking the trend all across the country. I mean, most school divisions are hemorrhaging teachers, and we aren't. We do have some turnover. After all, we are in a military area, and I'm going to share that in my Matters by Board Members, but it is very important that we are the ones that people want to come and teach at. They have the support that they need at the school level and at the school board office level. And I said that, I think that speaks volumes to our leadership. Not for us, because we don't do those day-to-day things, but definitely for the leadership at the office, as well as the schools. And I can tell you, seeing that one result that you had of a five for the elementary job satisfaction, that you're talking about elementary school, which has had the toughest job the past couple of years, because coming out of COVID, they were having to deal with kids that had never been to school before. And they've had a tough row, and to see their morale so high, and to see them so happy, it just is amazing to me. So thank you.
You bring up a good point about when we do attract teachers and they come to us, and then, of course, that drops our trend of hiring newer employees, because when people come here, they want to stay.
Exactly.
And recruiting, retention, all-year-round job, I like the idea, particularly from a recruitment standpoint, to make sure that our teachers in particular understand the vacancies and the potential gaps, and that we're what we refer to on industry side, soft recruiting and building those pipelines the whole year round. And I know we transitioned that several years ago under Dr. Vladu, and that's critically important.
And I'm glad you covered that about the surrounding jurisdictions. I mean, we don't want to dime anybody out, I know. But in speaking to HR, getting some briefings over the summer, I believe we were at 26 positions or so, down to 19, now we're down to six teaching positions, and other jurisdictions are in the hundreds. And that's a testament to show what kind of a job we're doing here, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Wrights.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights. Board members, before we transition into our next presentation, you may have gotten a note on your computer that they may be shutting down.
It already did.
We should be able to continue with the meeting and the presentations, but we may need to do voting through paper with Ms. Ford.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, is going to share a brief financial report. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, I have just three topics tonight for this evening's finance update. Let me begin with a budget update. Members, you'll recall when the General Assembly concluded its session last March, that they adopted a stopgap budget measure that we're referring to as the skinny budget. When they did that, we were expected and highly anticipating that the General Assembly would be called back into session, reconvene, and complete the budget work. They wanted to go through the spring to see how state revenues were holding up. We heard from the governor that in mid-June, that we were going to end the year on a surplus, but they could never come back together to amend the budget. So we start 2024 with the skinny budget. What we found, what we found out is that during this process through the spring, they had about $3.6 billion available, which is just a significant amount of money. Now that FY '23 has closed, the state has identified another one and a half billion dollars. So $5.1 billion was available. I believe they've already allocated $1 billion. So $4.1 billion, that's just out there waiting to be appropriated. Could mean good things for us. This is really good news, because I do believe that K-12 will receive some of this funding. However, the governor and the House are at different, have different priorities than the Senate, so they have to reconcile their differences. Why I say this is a good thing, because in July, J L A R, this is the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, this is an organization under the legislative branch, and they were charged with undertaking a comprehensive study of Virginia's K-12 funding formulas. There were about 10 items that they noted in their report, and you have a complete copy in your folder this evening. I just listed three that I thought would be very significant to K-12 and significant to us, and this is, Virginia schools receive less per funding than the 50-state average and the regional average, and in three of our five bordering states, only Tennessee and North Carolina receive less per student than Virginia. The SOQ formula yields substantially less funding than actual school division spending. And what they found in 2021, that the SOQ formula calculated $10.7 billion needed for schools. However, divisions actually spent $17.3 billion. The difference of $6.6 billion largely fell on local government. And then third, the formula substantially underestimates the division's staffing and compensation costs. And again, in FY '21, the SOQ formula calculated that divisions needed 113,500 full-time equivalent positions. And what is actually employed by school divisions is 171,400, 51% more than what the SOQ will fund. So there's a significant difference in what schools are spending and in what the state is funding, and then this largely falls on local government. So we have a real opportunity here with this report. We've known this for a long time, but the fact now that we have it in writing, we need to be lobbying our local representatives, not just school boards, but local government, too, because if we can put more of the burden and have the state pay for their fair share, then it relieves the burden on local government, and we'd all like to see that. So just a couple of recommendations that J L A R's study determined. The first four bullets are items that they said could be easily addressed in the short term, and this is addressing some technical issues, discontinued the Great Recession error cost reductions. Now, the most significant piece here is about $313 million, and has to do with the support cap, support positions. So back during the Great Recession, the state just arbitrarily stopped funding this, most of our support positions. And so right now, local government is paying the majority of those. The Senate had it in their budget that they were going to restore that cap for us. It was going to be about $2.5 million in our budget. However, that didn't get passed, but we have, you know, remain optimistic that that will come back to us in the next budget cycle. And then the consolidated at-risk programs, we receive at-risk funds through lottery and through also an incentive program. These dollars change from year to year, so it's nothing specific. It just depends on how much state funding is available, determines how much they give us, but they're asking that it should be in an SOQ program, because SOQs are then consistent funding. And so we won't see wide variations in the funding from year to year with the at-risk programs. And then the last thing is the adopting the new staffing ratios. This is, comes at almost a $2 billion cost, so it's going to take multiple bienniums to address this one, but to me, this is the one that really needs to be addressed. They need to start recognizing what it takes to run a school division. That is maintenance, it's all transportation, it's food service, and it's a number of other support positions that need to be recognized. And so, and then all this money that comes to us, and what I've shown here today, would be new money to us, so there would be no additional obligation for the local government to match. So if we had this additional money, then certainly we could provide additional compensation to our staff. And so move into my third slide and just talk about what we've been able to do with compensation. From FY '20 to '24, and keep in mind, in FY '21, we had the pandemic, and so we lost all of our state funding and actually lost our local funding for that year, so we weren't able to provide... So we weren't able to provide raises for that year. But what we've been able to do during this period is provide our licensed staff an average of 20.76% average increase. And also during that time period, we provided $2,500 in bonuses, and then $1,250 bonuses for our part-time, part-time staff. And for our non-licensing staff, it's 20.6% on the average increase. With our parent educators, 26.6. And this is largely in part due to the 10% increase that they received in FY24. And then for our bus drivers, 24.6%. We provided a 9% increase to them last year, and we also, for the first time, gave them a guaranteed eight-hour contract if they so wanted it. And I believe we were the first, one of the first, if not the first, in the region to offer that eight-hour contract. And then they also received the $2,500 bonuses. However, for our bus drivers and for our nurses, there were, we received specific ESAR grants that, just for those two work groups, that provided additional funding for bonuses. So we were able to give our bus drivers an additional $260, and we're able to give our nurses an additional $2,500. So as you can see, we've done a lot of work in the area of compensation, and we remain optimistic heading to this budget season, because we know there's a lot of money out there, and hopefully we'll be able to continue this trend of offering compensation increases. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Questions, comments?
Yeah. So essentially, Mr. Bowen, what you're saying is, is the state recognizes that they aren't funding enough, but they aren't willing to fully fund it?
That's correct. So now that we have the report, I know that they're going to be addressing it in the upcoming General Assembly session. It just depends on how much they are willing to, to commit to this. Again, a lot of it has to do with, they'll probably take a multi-level or multi-biennial approach to it, meaning a two-year, multiple two-years budget cycle to address these. But again, any money that comes to us as a result of the study is new money that we don't have to match, and that's always a great thing.
Okay. Now, this 20.76 total salary increase that we've been able to give licensed staff over the past four years, when the S, when the state gives us, they say that there's going to be a 5% raise. That's only for the SOQ positions, right? Which is only like 55% of the actual positions. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. So when they give us the money for a 5% raise, we actually have to come up with half of the money. So if it's, if it's going to cost us $5 million, we have to come up with $2.5 million of that. And so we have to rely at that point that there's, there's a new additional money from the state that doesn't require a specific program that's attached to it, like at-risk. If it's tied to a specific program, we can't use those funds to meet our obligation to provide that full funding for the raise, that where we have to rely on local government. The other thing that we look for is we look towards attrition. We hired a lot of people. We heard in the staffing report, 111 new teachers. You also heard that about 40 of them were 10 years or more experienced. Now, that doesn't help us on the attrition side. I like it when we hire, you know, starting teachers, because they're starting at the bottom of the scale. But here in York County, we hire generally above the five-year scale and above. That's where the majority of our, our new staff comes from. So that does make it challenging to, to offer significant raises.
Thank you. Do we know of a timeline when we will find out some of the allocation information for that $4 billion that's, that's hung up at the state level?
We're just waiting to see if there's a special session called. At this point, it just doesn't appear that it's going to happen. I think they're just going to address it in the, in the next budget session. This next session coming up is the long session. This is where they're developing the two-year budget. So I think they'll probably address it during that, during that period. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if that's what they do, that we wouldn't see a bonus this year, later in the year. It's, it's almost too late to do a compensation increase in the middle of the year, because we have to come up with that match.
So if they're, they do that for like the next, like two-year budget, that money that would be put into it, that's the recurring funds, correct, versus the one-time?
That would be reoccurring.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. bottom answer, I ask my questions.
This, this is potentially groundbreaking, because it is JLRG proponentsy on the SOQ. You know, one of the things that we have a responsibility from a board perspective is, you know, to build strong relationships with our other partners in local governance, board of supervisors primarily, obviously the county. And we've worked very hard at doing that. We've also worked very hard and diligently at reaching out to delegates and such. Now, we haven't had as much success or movement there. But the relationship we build with the board of supervisors, and we know that we're coming through an election season on the other side of November, I think we're well-positioned as a board to be able to have those frank conversations and frankly build county-wide advocacy. One board member, you know, kind of knocking on the door, Richmond, as we know, doesn't do it. It's got to be more of a extended county level approach, and obviously a regional approach. But from an SOQ standpoint, that's what we need to fix. We have to fix the framework and the model. And until we do that, we're not going to see substantial movement. And as you said, Mr. Bowen, you know, consistent budgets that are reliable at not only frequency, but at threshold levels that we can count on from a funding standpoint, and give some relief, obviously, to taxpayers here locally in the county. And I know there's a desire to do that always. So this is going to be interesting. Now, it could result in nothing, of course. But let's see. It's going to be interesting.
I know, back in the day, as a PTA leader, I was advocating on the Hill for some of the specific things that are listed in that JLRG study, funding those SOQs. And so I know that people after me kept on going and kept on going and kept on going to those advocacy days. And so I'm very, very grateful for the people who kept pushing and pushing and pushing from local school board levels and, and all that. So I think, you know, continue the advocacy toward, toward the state level for those funds. It'll be very, very interesting. I know the JLRG study was interesting to me to read. I know it's kind of a boring read for somebody who's not quite understanding everything that's in there, but just kind of gave me a positive outlook that they're seeing some of the things. And now it's on paper from an outside, outside source, and that's really, really great. But yeah, got to keep the advocacy going to the state level, for sure.
I think the staffing ratios for, because, I mean, that's not a new, you know, thing that people have been saying, but have an outside group do that and publish it, and then recognize that that truly is the need, the big need here to, to provide for staff, I think, is key.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our capital projects report. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Graulz. Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, and Mr. Mark, actually, Mr. Shearhart, come on down, sorry. His name was written before you, I don't know why. Mr. Shearhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans, is now going to present our capital projects report. And I think Dr. Carroll may have a few comments as well.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your capital projects report for the month of August. So it's been a very, very busy summer, and I'm sure everybody has lots of questions about what's going on to the number one project.
I don't have any questions.
So at Seaford Elementary School, we've, we've expanded the main offices and the media center there. We've renovated the cafeteria and the gymnasium, and we've also renovated all the classrooms and restrooms. We've also replaced the windows throughout the building. We've also installed LED lighting, replaced casework in all the classrooms, and we've also paved the bus loop and resurfaced the existing paving. And also expand, they're also expanding Seaford Road in front of the school. Now, the paving, the bus loop, they started that today, and they ran out of asphalt. The asphalt plant where they manufactured the asphalt ran out, so they couldn't finish it up. But their plans are to finish that the first thing in the morning. So we'll, we'll see them get that done. You saw this picture here a few months ago. This is inside the cafeteria there at Seaford Elementary School, and we were taking opening, making new openings to the wall there for the serving lines. They're going from one serving line to two serving lines, and so we had to open up the doors. So this is the cafeteria now. If you remember, in the past, it had the ceiling in there. We've got new LED lighting in here. We've opened up the windows on the both sides of the cafeteria here. You see, we've got the, the color pop and the, the sound attenuation panels on both walls there on the sides. And you can see here, they were laying the tile last week. And then this is what it looks like today. The tile is all complete, but you see what we're doing here. We're playing, playing dominoes, or whatever you want to call it here, shifting furniture around from classroom to classroom. As new furniture comes in, we need to move some of the old furniture out of that room and shift it to another room. And right now, the old stage area and the cafeteria was the, received a lot of that as we wait to move it to another classroom. A few months ago, we, we showed this here, this slide. This is actually the floor of the main offices. And then beyond it, on the other side of the concrete truck, is the floor of the new media center, the expanded media center at Seaford Elementary. And then, then it looked like this at the beginning of summer. They were building the, put the structural steel in and the CMU walls here. And then it looked like this a few weeks ago. You can see the brick is on the wall, on the walls here, the facial brick. And then they've got the ceilings installed, the, the windows installed. And then today, this is what it looks like today. Unfortunately, there was a tree truck right in my picture, and, and he pulled out and he left, and I was going to run up there and grab the picture. And just before I got there to take the picture, this truck and trailer pulled up. And I couldn't find a driver, so I couldn't get him to move. So anyway, you can't see it in its full glory, but you can see what it looks like now. And they've, there have been, made a lot of project progress today. You can see all the, the cement, cementatious, cementatious, cementatious fascia board above the windows there. That's, it's all like manufactured stone. So they're, they're busy putting all that up, making it look good. So there, we haven't talked this much about the, the new classroom wing in the back, but this is what it looks like now. They, I just got a text about 10 minutes ago. They just finished putting all the furniture in there. So all the classrooms in the back there look like this now, with all the furniture set up, all the casework's done. You see lights, ceilings, and everything. So look at this picture just for a second. You see the new ceilings, new lights, new casework, new windows. It's in a new wing. This is what the existing building looks like. New windows, new lights, new ceilings, new casework. So we try, try to treat the new, the existing building the same as the new, new wing. So they've got new everything in, in, in the building here on both parts of the building. They also have new plumbing. Now, the casework guys were working late tonight. They just left a little bit ago. They don't have it 100%, but every single room looks pretty much like this right now in the existing building. So they don't have all the countertops in. You can see on the top, on the cubbies on the left-hand side, there's no countertop there. If you look at the casework along under the window there, there's no casework there, no countertop there. So there are some things that aren't 100% done, but they're so very close, so very close. So this is what the gym looked like a few weeks ago. You can see we took, had to take out part of the wall up there. You can see the insulation behind the wall. We had to take it out. We took the old boiler out. We took the, the other heating and air conditioning equipment out. And we're putting these new pieces of heating and air conditioning equipment in there for the gym. These are geothermal. So now we took it from being on a boiler, we made it more efficient, put it on geothermal system now. We also increased the size, because now this gym is not only for a gym class, but it's also going to be used as their caf, their auditorium now. So one of the things we did is take the, take the stage from the, from the cafeteria to make it larger, and we moved it into the gymnasium. So this is what it looked like a few weeks ago, and this is what it looks like now. So all the, all the ductwork's been painted. You can see the stage there on the right-hand side, the new floors down. They're in the process of putting the sound panels up in the gymnasium. They were actually working on that late this evening. We have, there are some, there is a metal shroud that covers the pipes. You see the pipes at the far end, end of the building there. There's a metal shroud that covers those pipes, so you won't see those pipes in the future. We wanted it to make it a nice, very, increase the ambiance there, so, you know, so they could use it for their plays and, and, and things like that, and be proud of it. The students can be proud of it. So in July, we were, they were very busy there, putting HVAC systems on the roof. You see here, they had two cranes in operation that day. This is another picture from today. They were actually paving the bus, bus loop that I was talking about earlier, when they ran out of asphalt. So most of it is paved all the way down to the trailer there, but they just didn't, they ran out and they couldn't finish paving it. The trailer, the construction trailer is scheduled to leave on Wednesday. This is one of the playgrounds. We had to disassemble, because we were building the addition there. So it's been reinstalled, it's ready for the children to play on it. Now, this is part of the building that was an extra. And so we enclosed the, made a courtyard there. The new addition is in the background there, you see it. And then you had these two shaded areas now, so they can actually have classes outside. There are, there is seating that goes underneath these shaded areas, where the men are standing at there, gets a round concrete flooring there, a round concrete surface there. So they get all these areas, plus there's a porch in the background right in front of the addition. So they have lots of areas, they can do things outside with the students. And then the next project we talk about is Grafton Bethel Elementary School. This is renovating the gym there. We removed the, they had VCT floor tile in there, it wore out. So we replaced it with resilient flooring. We painted some game lines, center court, logo in the center of the floor, the walls, the ductwork there. And then also removed and replaced the wall pads. So this is what it looked like. And unfortunately, I didn't catch it before they painted all the green lines. So they, before, it had white ceiling and kind of a tan wall, and it was just kind of blah. So putting that green line on the wall and putting, painting the ductwork, just give it some pop. So then we took up the floor, because there's a mess in there, and then now that's what it looks like.
It's gorgeous.
The next one is Grafton Complex Middle School Gymnasium there. This is a poured-type floor. It went, it was between two different gyms and two, two other gyms, and they both have wood floors. But this is just a practice gym, so we wanted to put a regular, a resilient floor back in there. So we painted some game lines in there and, and painted the walls as well. And then we also were replacing the wall pads. So this is what it looked like. You kind of see it's a little bit wore out, needed, needed some, needed some love. So then we took up the floor, and this is what it looks like today. Now, this was when I took the picture this afternoon. They just got finished. You see the clipper, the wall pads there and the distance there, they get, they get hung on the wall. They weren't hung here in this picture. They hung them on the wall this afternoon. On the other end says Grafton, so Grafton Clippers. And they painted these four floor lines, have been waiting for the special custom paint color, and they received that today. So this floor and this gym is 100% done now. So Tab Middle School is another project we're working on. Have chill water pumps there, geothermal, all kinds of HVAC stuff there. We cleaned ductwork throughout the building. We overhauled their, their fresh air units. This is some of the pumps that were there before. Maybe it needed a little bit of help and a little bit of love there, and so that's what they look like now. Now, they are going to re-insulate all these here to get them finished up here, but, but they're in operation right now. And then the last one is, last slide for this evening, is, this is one of the heat wheels inside of the fresh air unit. So we had them replace everything on the inside of the fresh air units, new motors, bearings, everything, and new filters and everything at Tab Middle School. So that was another part of that project. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Was it 1962 when Seaford Elementary was built?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-two.
Has it been renovated at all since then? I know we've done some additions, but I don't know that we've ever done a renovation there.
In 1999, they converted to geothermal, and in 2000, they built the gymnasium.
But as far as the school itself, where we're remodeling the school?
No, it had original, original, the original casework in it, it had original restrooms in it, everything, everything was what they had before.
And for Grafton Bethel Elementary, I've been in that gym, and that gym was, that was wore out. And the improvements you made there are tremendous. So kudos to everybody that did that work, did a job.
I know in my travels, we've got some Seaford families who've been very stressed out and very worried, because they're driving by and saying, there's no possible way this is going to be done. is going to be done. If you look at the building, there's no way it's going to be done. And what I've been telling people is, kids don't need to have a soffit on the outside of the building to start school. Kids are going to be in the school the first day of the building, first day of school, and everything's going to work out. What I think is very, very astonishing is all of this work to take a 60-year-old building and completely overhaul it has been done in 76 days. Is that kind of about the right number, right around there?
It'll be 72 days on the 24.
Even better, 72 days. And so I always say this, I know that Ms. Nagel and Ms. Vandergriff, every time I see them, they're going like this, like, ah! But it's a, it's a short-term inconvenience for, I mean, I'm completely blown away when I walk in that building. And I appreciate every single time you take me in there because you let me ask 1,000 questions. Just the light, the change in light in that building. Obviously, that's so important for kids and for learning and for teachers and everything. But I just think families are going to walk in and they're going to forget about the stress or, and the worry that they've had during this entire process. Because it's really, really amazing and it's beautiful. And I mean, I just cannot, I can't wait. I can't wait for open house and to watch these families walk through because I think they're just going to be completely blown away. And thank you for always bringing us such great pictures because you always give us the before, during, and after, so we get to do our ooh and ah moment. I think it's really great. The outside courtyard, I know we've seen that at other schools, and I just, I'm really excited for the kids to be able to enjoy that space as well. So in addition to Seaford, all of these other projects were going on. So it's not just that in 72 days, you're renovating a 60-year-old school, but you're doing the other projects as well. So I'm just really excited for our Seaford families to be able to go through there.
I agree. And in a constrained environment, particularly when you started these projects, I mean, with regard to material and stuff like that. So it's remarkable. So hats off to the team and from a contract standpoint.
Yeah, just, I'm always blown away at the contrast between old gyms to new gyms and what the change in the wood flooring and just a little bit of paint on the walls and different pads to spot that color and stuff like that. They look fantastic, both the Grafton Bethel, that gym looks, I mean, that, if you showed it to people and you didn't ask, I don't think anyone would call it an elementary school gym, you know? And then when you tell them, they'll probably be blown away. But they all look fantastic. Thank you.
It goes for a lot of basketball in Seaford Gym before the renovation.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one. Mr. Schardt, they're going to place some grass out there in the courtyard, correct?
Yes, they're putting sod in this.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Schardt.
All right. Next, we move into our summer activities report. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Geralt. Just a few remarks about several events and trainings that happened over the summer. Mr. Morgan, who's the county administrator, often jokes that I go away for, or we as a school system, go away for two or three months in the summer and go to the beach. And I remind him that we do work and there's a lot of projects going on anyway. So over the summer, we hosted, to give you a list of a few things. We hosted our Second Annual Regional Leadership Summit. And the leadership, the regional leadership summit is something that we put together two years ago where we wanted to invite other leaders, whether they're executive staff, principals, or assistant principals from other systems, so we could all learn together. And this was the, the second year we did it. The first year, we had 191 participants. This summer, we had 238 participants, which was fantastic. We had 16 different school districts represented, obviously Chesapeake, Gloucester, Hampton, Isle of Wight, New Kent, Newport News, and Norfolk, Pecos, and some of the close ones. But we also had Albemarle, Pasquotank, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, WJCC, and I think I said Albemarle already. And then we had also others, so to speak, such as CSEP, Southeastern Cooperative Education Program, which is a specialized agency on the other side of the water. We had New Horizon staff here, Newport Academy, Shenandoah University, and Virginia Community College System Representatives. So it was a really good event. I appreciate many of you came to that event as well. We also had our Typical Leadership Academy that we do for our own staff. This year, we had a two-day leadership academy, which included over 130 leaders in York County School Division, which included principals, assistant principals, instructional coordinators, testing coordinators, again, all of our leaders from central office. The morning general session included a keynote speaker, and you guys got to hear Dr. Thomas Murray speak. He's the director of Future-Ready Schools. He's trailblazed through multiple facets of the United States government to implement student-centered learning while helping to create cultures of innovation where teachers can create the types of learning experiences today's modern learners need to thrive. During the academy, participants engage in professional development on a variety of topics, including sessions focused on our new strategic plan, which you've heard us obviously talk about quite a bit, the mission, vision, and core values. YCSD principals also shared their school improvement plans with us and amongst their peers, which was really the highlight of the event. Today and tomorrow, YCSD teachers and staff participating in division-wide professional development. Today, I attended six different locations. I got to see our counselors and social workers at TAB Middle School. I got to see our third through fifth grade teachers and the new science work that they're doing over at Grafton Bethel. York High School had high school teachers, English teachers there, and special education teachers. And there was one more place I want, I'm trying to think of where it was. But I went to four or five of those. And it was wonderful to connect with our staff again and see the energy that they have as they're excited to welcome students next week. We also had a transportation academy. You saw James Riddick here tonight with the fancy bow tie on. He had a wonderful academy. There were approximately 120 employees in attendance for the transportation academies. It was the first time our employees had the opportunity to hear the vision of the department from James, our new director. One of the major highlights was the rollout of the new pilot program, the four-card system for the pickup and drop-off procedures for pre-K and kindergarten students. Also, you heard earlier, we had 111 new teachers at NTO, New Teacher Orientation, which again, last year there was 160. So I think that's a real credit, of course, to our school division. We're really excited to have all these new members joining our team. In addition to presentations from central office, the new teachers also had the opportunity to learn from current YCSD teachers. Last, but certainly not least, I really want to thank our custodial staff. As you saw from the slide earlier, I can't remember the number, Dr. Wright's, was it 14? I believe we were 14, 16 custodians short. We've been 10 to 12 short for nine, 10 years. So those people are unbelievably dedicated. They work extremely hard in the, and our, and our average age of our buildings is 53 years old. And I know that because I'm 53. And I certainly need a lot of upkeep and shine too, just like our schools do. But they take great pride in providing excellent services. They clean our schools and we, bless you. And we certainly couldn't, we couldn't do what we do without them. Their attention to detail, it's vital to our school division, and their commitment is greatly appreciated. So in just one week, we'll welcome back returning and returning staff, returning students, and as well as new students and new staff looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions regarding anything from the summer?
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move into our comments of citizens, our public participation at board meetings. Before I open up for public comments, I'll share a few remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up for three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. A timer will begin after you state your name and address. I now open up public participation for comments by citizens. And first, we have Peter Romeo.
Good evening. You need to meet, introduce myself. Pete Romeo.
And your address.
207 Boulevard Drive, York County, Virginia.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the York County School Board. Dr. Shandor, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Pete Romeo. My wife Pam and I have been York County residents since 1997. Much has changed in the 20 years since our last child graduated York High School. Though not yet a widespread problem in York County, there are plenty of examples of what used to be a coalition that included parents, teachers, and school board members working together to provide the best education for children, devolving into the pitting of concerned parents and citizens against an education establishment bent on infringing upon parents' rights. From the local level to the federal level, engaged parents have been met with contempt by some school boards and have been labeled terrorists by the FBI. Well, as Governor Youngkin says, "Parents matter." His model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia public schools should be adopted in its entirety by York County. Similar legislation was recently passed in North Carolina, requiring parents to be notified prior to any changes in the name or pronoun used for a student in school records or by school personnel, and banning instructions on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality in kindergarten through fourth grade. HB 574 bans transgender girls and women from competing on middle school, high school, and college sports teams that align with their gender identity, stating that a student's sex shall be recognized based solely on a student's reproductive biology and genetics at birth. This should not be controversial. It's science. Noted author Thomas Sowell refers to the intellectual and political elite as the anointed, those whose arguments are granted merit not based on any empirical evidence, but solely on the anointed's intellectual or political status. Opposite the anointed are the benighted, those who are to be made aware or have their consciousness raised. In his book, The Vision of the Anointed, Sowell writes, "What is seldom part of the vision of the anointed is a concept of ordinary people as autonomous decision-makers, free to reject any vision and to seek their own well-being through whatever social processes they choose. The anointed tend to conceive of the family as a recipient institution for government largesse or guidance, rather than a decision-making institution determining for itself how children shall be raised and with what values." He goes on to write, "The family is inherently an obstacle to schemes for central control of social processes. Therefore, the anointed necessarily find themselves on a collision course with the family. Though we no longer have children in York County public schools, we do have a vested interest in the environment that will form the next generation of parents, neighbors, teachers, and leaders. There is a distinct line between those responsible for educating children and those responsible for raising children. There's no doubt a relationship forms between teachers and students, but make no mistake, they are not your children. They are your students. With all the educational alternatives available to parents, it would be wise for your own survival as an institution to avoid taking the position of the anointed." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tammy Dearberger.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Dearberger. I'm a York County homeowner and resident in District Two. As of July 19th, Governor Northam's model policies have been withdrawn and have no further force or effect. These policies have been replaced by the 2023 revised model policies. And by law, it is now up to each school board to adopt policies which are consistent with or more comprehensive than the 2023 revisions. I am petitioning the school board to vote to update policy JB with wording that provides clear, long-term production, I'm sorry, protection for fundamental parental rights and religious liberties. The current policy is vague and does not provide the superintendent with a clear directive. This has a potential to leave our schools in a state of constant change with each new superintendent. This is harmful to students, harmful to parents, and harmful to teachers. I am also petitioning the school board to vote to direct Superintendent Dr. Shandor to replace policy JB-P in its entirety with the 2023 revised model policies. The revised policies take great strides toward protecting a parent's right to raise their child, which the current policy lacks. Among other things, these policies remove language encouraging educators to deceive or hide information from parents, especially when it comes to their children experimenting with gender identity at school. Make it clear, parents must be notified and given opportunity to object before counseling regarding gender is given to their children. And make it clear, schools can't constitutionally compel employees or students to speak words that violate their faith or conscience. Schools can and should protect every single child equally and fairly. It is possible to do this without trampling on parents' constitutional rights and the privacy and safety rights of our kids. I did email all five school board members sharing this information, and I want to thank Ms. Geralt, Mr. Richardson, and Mr. Schaefer for your reply. My district board member, Mr. Higginbotham, did not reply to me, nor neither did Mr. Mayet. So as a parent citizen, I appreciate a reply when I reach out to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dearberger.
Thank you.
And next, we have Michael Peterson.
Michael Peterson. York County, resident, 516 Tab Smith Trail. Summer breaks over, and here we are again. And we had the Parade of Good News and Awards for sundry good works. A portion of the meeting like that doesn't get timed like public comments. There's a break afterwards, so the members of the board can take campaign photos with those who received awards. After the break, the business meeting begins, and we've been paying attention to it here. And I was most curious by the finance director's slide about the 20.76% increase for the licensed staff. And he told us also about the increases for the support staff. Now, that 20.76, I take it is over a four- or five-year period. And so it doesn't seem as generous. But, you know, so much of what goes on at the York County School Division is what's left unsaid. What has been the change in the administration salaries over that period? Dr. Shandor's cabinet have not settled, I don't believe, for 20.76% increase over that period of time. But apparently, that's where what's important to the board. We don't get any news about what's going to happen with Dr. Shandor's cabinet. You let new contracts? We didn't hear anything about the new contracts coming up. In fact, some of the contracts were renegotiated well before the deadline for expiration of the contract. And there were substantial increases. You all know that. I then come up here to speak, and I was reflecting on what Madam Chair says, that I'm to be courteous. Now, that's not in the board's policy for speaking at a meeting. What's the purpose of courtesy? What is she trying to control with that? I ask you and your council to check as to what courtesy can be demanded. She illustrates that by saying it's to model good behavior for all the students who are listening. Well, we've had an example tonight of the modeling that goes on. You smiled all the kids and all the award winners, and you sit here with your dead faces as people from the public come up to present. All of you, shame on you all. And we'll be back to address Ms. Geralt's problems with the board of elections at some other time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Next, we have Deb Wesley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. My name is Deb Wesley, and my address is 902 Dare Road, Yorktown, Virginia. I feel like I need to say Happy New Year because we're getting ready to start a new year. And even after 36 years of teaching, most of it in York County, so I would be the high end of the pay scale, I still get excited about a new school year and a new beginning with a new group of students. So I'm still coming back. That's, I've been in York County for 34 years. And I am honored to serve as the president of York Education Association for another year. My 30-plus years of membership in the YEA has allowed me to become a leader and an advocate for public education. The York Education Association membership includes educators in York County. This includes teachers, bus drivers, paraeducators, secretaries, custodians, and substitutes. YEA believes we are all educators regardless of our job descriptions, and that we have the opportunity and the responsibility to build relationships with our students, and these relationships help prepare them for a successful future. Throughout this year, YEA will continue to educate our school community about collective bargaining. Collective bargaining is that process in which management and employee representatives negotiate a contract for a group of employees. Collective bargaining can and should be a mutually professional and respectful obligation to bargain in good faith. Collective bargaining is and will be a win-win situation, not only for all the employees, but for students and families in the community at large. Collective bargaining will not solve all the problems that occur in public education, but it does give educators a voice that can have a profound effect on our professional lives. In addition, YEA continues to embrace and support YCSD's strategic priorities, the strategic plan priorities of collaborative commitment, supportive culture, highly effective talent, and future-ready graduates. YEA realizes we must all work together to cultivate relationships within the community, support and value our students and staff, and continue to grow professionally and personally. Focusing on these priorities will help us ensure that our students are prepared for a successful future. The York Education Association looks forward to working with the YCSD community to support all educators, students, and families. We hope everyone... We hope everyone has a successful start to the school year, and the gymnasium at Grafton-Bethel is amazing. You all need to come and see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley, and congratulations on year 36. Next, we have Russell Evenson.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Russell Evenson. I'm a 28-year-plus resident of York County, also pastor of World Outreach Worship Center in Newport News, of which a number of those congregants are parents, families, and residents here in York County. Me, personally, my wife, and those members of the congregation, we want to encourage you that as of July 19th this year, the 2023, 2021 transgender sexual model policies were done away with with the new policy coming forth out of Governor Youngkin's office. We're just simply here to encourage you, to let you hear our voice, our heart, that we have concern for parents' rights, for the children's rights in all the areas of school, all the counties, especially in particular York County. And so, we'd like to just encourage you to vote to update this JB policy that is now law by the Virginia Department of Education. And much of what has been said already, the current policy is rather vague, and there needs to be some specifics added to it. And not, and it being vague, it kind of leaves a lot of room for interpretation and a constant change, maybe with administrations that come and go. Thankfully, York County has been pretty stable. Our church resides in a city where it's not been stable, if you can read between my lines. And we're also petitioning the board to vote to adopt and replace this policy in its entirety, and be careful not to just piecemeal it, to try to fit into what is currently in place. So, we would appreciate your efforts in that, and thank you very much for your time. Listen to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Juan Sebastian Jakicic.
Hello. Hello, good evening. My name is Juan Sebastian Jakicic from York County. I would like to share two sets of information, two facts from York County. One is an email, a response that I received from one of the chair here, from one of the member here. As you can, as you heard, my name is Jakicic, my final name, but this school board member called me Jakastick. That I found that that is highly derogatory, offensive, discriminatory, and racist. That was in response to my request to investigate Dr. Shandor. The second set is, I want to share, is an experience with my daughters. My wife is a healthcare professional. She probably took care of some of your relatives. I am a scientist, and I have been mentoring some of your brightest students here. I provide them research opportunities. But for you, we are a threat. We have been banned from entering any York County school property without prior authorization from the authorities. Why? Because I sent a letter to Governor Youngkin exposing you. That letter was sent by Ms. Gerrots. And that ban affect my 11-year-old daughter because she cannot play in her school playground because we cannot go enter there because we are going to face trespassing charges. That's a threat. So, that was in response for exercising my right for advocating the education, for the educational right of my autistic daughter. My question to Ms. Gerrots is, what type of sick pleasure do you feel by preventing my 11-year-old daughter to not play in her school playground with her friends and classmates? Do you have any answer for that? You have sent the letter twice, and when I asked you for that, you sarcastically said, "York County has plenty parks and recreation sites that you can go." That's the type of school board member that you have here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jakicic. Next, we have Gary Porter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. My name is Gary Porter. I live in District Two of York County. Make no mistake, I believe that York County schools are excellent, and in 1990, after I had retired from the Air Force, I brought my family here for expressly that purpose because of the school's reputation. But everything can be proved, and I think YCSD is no exception. Like others, I encourage you to enact without delay the new transgender model policies that the Department of Education has published. They are reasonable, they are measured, they enhance parental rights, they protect your teachers from compelled speech, and they enhance the safety of students in bathrooms and locker rooms. But I also want to raise continued concern about the sexually explicit books in some of your school libraries, even one in an elementary school. And I have this experiment for you. Go to Grafton High School and check out the book Fam Home, and take it home. It's a graphic novel, and I emphasize the word graphic. Gather your grandkids around with their mother and begin to read that book to them out loud. It's a graphic novel, so you want to make sure they can see the pictures. And if you can get through that book without their mother shouting "Stop," then maybe it's okay to have in our school libraries. Otherwise, I suggest that it has no place in the school library. When I was in high school, in public school, this would have been called pornography. In 2023, it's just called another school book. I also want to bring to your attention a Gallup poll that was published just last month. The Gallup organization asked various Americans of different age groups how proud they were to be American. Most alarmingly, in the age group of 18 to 34, which includes, of course, your graduates, only 18% thought they were, or said they were extremely proud to be an American, but most alarming, 10% of that cohort said they were not at all proud to be an American, which means, if you translate it, 100 of your graduates this year, about 1,000, 100 of your graduates may think that America is not anything to be proud of. Now, that should alarm you. And if I was in your seats, I'd want to know, what do my graduates feel about their country? And I'd want to do a poll, and I would pay close attention to that poll. And then I would ask if it reflects what Gallup found, what has contributed to that feeling? What has caused them to hate their country? These kids are going to one day lead this country. And if your educational program, if your curriculum, if remarks by your teachers are contributing to their distaste for this country, then I think there's some self-examination that needs to be done and some improvement. So, I just encourage you to take a look at this poll in detail and take action as you see appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next, we have Pam Bisho.
Good evening. My name is Pam Bisho, 37-year resident of York County, 103 Kimberly Court. Do you remember when you chose to be right-handed or left-handed or heterosexual? You know you never chose, but were just born that way. When I was a child, left-handed students were about 10% of the population and were not acceptable. Until a few decades ago, many school divisions throughout the U.S. forced them to be right-handed. We finally realized how detrimental that was to students' well-being and stopped trying to make them something they were not. The U.S. LGBTQ population is only 7%, and still unacceptable to many. Research suggests that when parents learn of their child's LGBTQ sexual status, 1/3 are accepted by parental love, and 1/3 face parental rejection. The other 3 do not disclose their status until adulthood for fear of that rejection. Minors who are rejected by their parents and kicked out of their homes are more likely to support themselves by prostitution and use drugs to soften the pain. Acknowledging transgender and non-binary youth by having their pronouns respected reduce attempted suicides by 50%. LGBTQ youth are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather are placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized by society. This is why they are more likely to be depressed, bullied, sexually assaulted, and the object of physical harm. Some people say LGBTQ behavior is not natural. The facts are that to date, over 1,000 animal species have been observed in same-sex behavior and same-sex co-parenting. Homosexuality is widespread, with bisexuality even more prevalent among the species. Mental health issues are on the rise in Virginia, affecting 50% of middle schoolers and 65% of high schoolers with anxiety or nervousness issues. Why contribute to the rise of mental health problems by singling out transgender, non-binary students who just want to be accepted for their humanity? Being something other than heterosexual is not contagious. LGBTQ students are human beings. Treat them as you would all students with compassion and acceptance. Those who fear them or despise their differences have no place in our schools. Your first duty is not to the parents or the government, but to the students to whom you're entrusted to nurture and educate. Involving yourselves in a student's sexual identity, potentially placing them in harm's way by outing them to a bigoted parent, is abhorrent. I strongly urge this board to stop any interference into the intimate lives of students who attend school for education, not intimidation and condemnation. Governor Youngkin's policies are just wrong, as is blind justice. Join Fairfax County and protect our children from misguided and hateful beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bisho.
Thank you, Ms. Bisho.
Next, we have Diane Smith.
Good evening. My name is Diane Smith. I live at 208 Susan Newton Lane in Yorktown, Virginia. I am here to speak on behalf of our children, on behalf of all of our children. Some are gay, some are straight, some are lesbians, some are transgender, some have no idea who they are yet. All of them need our protection. Government, Governor Youngkin told transgender youth, "Trust your parents, they love you." I am very, very happy and very, very lucky to say I would have wholeheartedly agreed with him, right up until I went to college and, well, met more people. That was the first time I realized that not all parents actually love their children. Since then, I've been a Sunday school teacher, a youth group leader, a tutor for disadvantaged children, a foster parent, and adoptive parent. Through all these experiences, I can now say, from experience, that there are many parents who do not appear to love their children, and many more who love their children but have actually no idea how to parent. But even children with supportive, loving parents need caring adults in their lives. And for many, these caring adults are teachers. I actually went to Yorktown Elementary and Yorktown Intermediate and York High School, and my daughter went to Mount Vernon Elementary and, I guess we're a traitor, she went to Tab Middle School and Tab High School. So, I know the teachers here care about their kids. They go into teaching because they care about kids. My mom actually taught at York High School as well. But schools can, and I have seen it, and they should be, a safe place for every child. Teachers should be the people, people that children can talk to safely. That is a relationship that can have so much value. I cannot tell you how much Mrs. Rush in my high school English class changed my life. But turning teachers into gender police hurts their relationship with their students and puts our youth at risk. Please reject the governor's harmful politically motivated policies, and please protect all of York County's children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Retired Robin Middleton. My physical address, Yorktown, Virginia, has been provided in writing. I am a retired Air Force hospital administrator, having served 24 years in the areas of medical programs, planning, policy, medical readiness, and compliance. I work currently with the Virginia Medical Freedom Alliance. We are a nonprofit group of physicians, nurses, lawyers, pharmacists, concerned citizens, et cetera, that advocate and educate for informed consent, patients' rights, physicians' rights, patient safety, preserving the sanctity of private doctor-patient relationship, and medical ethics overall. I'm here tonight just to provide some useful and hopefully encouraging information to both parents and school administrators alike. It goes without saying that this has been a stressful past three years navigating the healthcare information landscape and making clinical decisions for ourselves and for our precious families and children. Despite the risks to the pediatric patient cohort, there are still some physicians and regulating bodies who are still recommending COVID-19 vaccines for children. Many physicians are not recommending these injections for children and are clearly advising against them. Please know that there is no clinical consensus in the healthcare community. Please also know that the decision to vaccinate your child rests solely with you, the parent. This goes for COVID-19 or any other vaccine as well. What I have here today are some handouts with the Virginia Code Law and the actual religious exemption form, and I'll hang back to provide these to anybody who would like a copy. The reference is Virginia Code, Chapter 12, Section 5-11080. Public schools in Virginia are required by law to accept religious exemptions. If you choose not to vaccinate your child, or if you choose to take your time to wait, this is absolutely okay, this is your right. You can simply fill out this form, you get it notarized, there's a notary at any UPS store, it takes five minutes, keep a copy, submit it to the school. I also have forms with the QR code to our website for various clinical and legal administrative information that you can use as parents. And also, I would like to convey that I emphasize with you as school administrators, non-medical personnel who have been thrust into this stressful environment over the last three years, we are here to advise you as well as administrators, please reach out to us at any time where we can assist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other sheets up here, but it looks like number 11 was taken, it just wasn't turned in, so if somebody is holding on to sheet 11? Close, public participation of comments by citizens. And then we'll move into matters by board members, and we'll start down at the end with Mr. Myatt.
You know, I think we, I was able to attend the new teacher orientation we may mention of, the Leadership Summit or Academy, which was hosted by York County, which was also excellent. So, I won't touch base on those, but I'll simply say to all our new teachers and leaders and administrators that have joined the team, thank you so much for choosing York County. I can't wait to have an opportunity to interact with you, to visit with you, and I know that you're going to find York County supportive and inclusive, and I think you'll find, again, your experience here very, very rewarding. Just a general reminder, open houses at the elementary, middle, and high school levels next week, so I'm looking forward, I should say this, through this week, forgive me, so I'm looking forward to visiting with parents and new students and teachers in the building, so that'll be a lot of fun. Then we'll get out and observe some practices at the middle and high school level to observe coaching and the other dynamics, and that's all I got. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yeah, to start, I'd like to say, you know, we all, board members, I think I can speak for all of us, that we welcome phone calls, emails, you know, public comment from people in York County, people with vested interest in York County schools. And I don't ever want to give off the impression that I don't want to hear what people have to say. But I also want to recognize that there are two sides to every story, and you hear some things that, well, there's really three sides, they say, there's what one side says, what the other side says, and then the truth somewhere combined in the middle. So, a lot of times, people ask us why we don't respond directly to some of the public comment and things like that. Sometimes, it is confidential information that we simply cannot share in public. a, it's not time for dialogue, that's phone conversations, meeting in person, I'm happy to meet with anyone in person if they would like to contact me, I'll be happy to get back and do that. But as we start this school year, I think about some of the things we've done this summer to lead up to it, and you know, the school year ends, you know, end of May, beginning of June, depending on where, where you go to school, but the work doesn't stop, you know. Teachers, even if they're not working the summer academy and things like that, they're thinking, they're preparing, they're working on what they can do better for the students in the next year. The leaders and administrators are joining different PD sessions. York County is a leader in the area here with the Leadership Summit, just in the couple of years we've had it, has, how it's grown from, you know, you know, 100-some members to 160 people who've gone, have attended school divisions, as far as, like Albemarle, I believe you said, and maybe one up from Northern Virginia came down to participate in, and the quality speakers we get to do the keynote addresses for that. And then I've been lucky enough to participate both in my role as a board member and then my job outside of being a school board member, going to the individual sessions and seeing people from all around the area, not just York County, but all around here, working together to try to figure out what we can do to better support kids in the classroom, to support the teachers, to support the secretaries, the paras, the bus drivers, whatever we can do to create a better environment, and working together to do that. And that is incredibly, it fills my heart to see that, when people are working together for that, whether it's the same division or, or outside. And those are things that I wish that people highlight more, and people could see more of for that. So, and another thing I want to just highlight, it was not sort of glossed over, but I think they said last year we had 160 new teachers, and then this year we have 111. So one of the things we have charged, you know, Dr. Shandor and his staff, is to hire, to recruit, hire, and maintain high-quality teachers, and in one-year span, having 50 less that we've had to hire when we have more teaching positions that we have to fill, because there's been new allocations from the state for this, or we see the need for this, so we increase, like more counselors we had, you know, this year. So to see those numbers increase, but the number of new hires we have to hire be reduced is, is key for that, and that we're attracting the, the right people, and then we continue to train and maintain their professional development and their growth in it, and they can continue to act as leaders as we move on. I think that's, you know, very important to highlight. And then, you know, when we're starting this year, I always talk about, I've had 20-plus years, 20 years in education now, and to see what the teachers do, what the bus drivers do, the custodians, the paras, they, everybody attached to the school building, the, the food staff, they're all preparing to make a difference. And it depends on what their mindset for, what kind of difference they're going to make in the kids' lives. And the, the old adage, you know, they don't care how much you know, but they need to know how much you care. So that's what it is, that the kids come into the building, they're, they're kept healthy, safe, and the education they receive is that high-quality education so they can be successful when they leave the school community, whether it's into the workforce, to the military, to college, or, or any other path, you know, they make. And that's, that's our focus, that's my focus, that I want to keep York County headed in, in that direction for that. So, like I said before, if anyone has any questions or comments, please reach out, phone number and email is on the York County website, I'd be happy to meet with you in person if you'd like to do that as well. But I would just want to wish everyone a great start to the year. I know we have the, the athletes, the fall athletes have already started, you know, they have, first football games begin before, you know, school even starts, you know, here coming up, field hockey's getting ready to start as well, volleyball, cross-country, all those things. I want to, you know, highlight the students and the coaches who are doing that, and then all of the parents providing all of the rides and everything for that, and the carpooling that we do to make sure that students can participate. I just want to highlight that and, you know, encourage people to go out and experience those things, because those are the successes we get to go celebrate in those games and things like that. And then as we go throughout the year, as we go to new seasons and concerts and things like that, go out and celebrate the work that these students and the staff that work with these kids every day, what they do. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. I would say that goes for all five of us, that we are responsive to our constituents, and that even if I get an email that's from someone outside my district, a lot of times I will say that, you know, I'll forward this to our superintendent, or that whichever one of us, whoever's district it is, will respond to it. But in York County, we are dedicated to being culturally responsive. We are kind, and we respect all people. If you want to see this in action, come volunteer in our schools. Doesn't matter how old you are, doesn't matter what school you go to, they would be happy to have you help and volunteer, and you can see exactly what goes on. If you have any questions after that, come see me, I'll go around with you. I was able to go to the new teacher orientation, it was awesome. Friday night, football. Bruton is opening up their season by playing their first game on a turf field. Yes, we finally moved up the pit to Bailey Field status, okay? So now it's, it's going to be a football game against Jamestown, or is, I'll be nice. But, but the football game will be very special, it's going to be a time when the whole community comes out, so if anyone's up near the Bruton Zone, feel free to come on out to Bruton High School for the football game Friday night. On September 11th, Doug Holroyd, who is the Board of Supervisor candidate for the First District, will be joining me, and we are going to be touring the schools. He's running unopposed, so he wanted to get in and see the schools, so we are going around on a tour on Monday, September 11th. And I just wanted to share a couple of things. I have a school in, in my zone, Queens Lake Middle School. They had a turnover of 20% for last year, which isn't too bad, 12 out of 60, two of which were retirements and three were military moves. Due to increasing enrollment, they're well over 700 now, they added for this year, a math teacher, English teacher, two special education teachers, a health medical science teacher, and an assistant principal. Even with all this growth and added positions, Queens Lake Middle School is fully staffed. That's the way that we want to have every York County school. And in case you were wondering, a little bit from last year, our division-wide graduation percentage was 97.5, and I believe that Bruton led that with 100%, if I'm not mistaken. So congratulations to Bruton, congratulations to the entire division at 97.5%, which far exceeds the, the state average and most divisions. I did want you to know that we are the number-one school division in our region. We are number three out of 132 school divisions in the state. We have, then, we have been voted the number-one best teachers in our region. York County is special. Now, you'd hear some people get up and speak tonight, and it seemed like they would put a damper on York County and the successes that we have. However, I will tell you that there is no better school division in this part of the state. In fact, there's only two that were ranked better in the entire state, out of 132. And I know it is truly back-to-school time, because yesterday, I moved, my wife is a teacher, first-grade teacher, at, at Waller Mill Elementary, and I moved in Lucky the Turtle and Scooby and Shaggy the Guinea Pig into her room. So it's got to be time for the school to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you. I did attend the Regional Leadership Training Summit over the summer, and new teacher orientation. I've attended the new teacher orientation for the last seven years since I've been on the school board, so it's always a treat to go see the new teachers and speak to them. And you're right, they, they're amazed that school board members show up to the orientations, but it's really nice to see where they're from, where they're coming from, the new teachers, and get those, those perspectives. I do have to actually always also state that I did get your emails supporting Governor Yonkin's new transgender policy, and I responded to all those. The letters I did not respond to, I got about five or six, I think maybe half a dozen, they were form letters, but they didn't seem to ask for a response. But I do want those individuals know, know that when you, they wrote to me, I did, did receive those letters. I do have to also mention Mr. Yakasich, is he still here? I think it's Yakasich. I think he was talking about me, I responded to him about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, and spell checked, spelled his name wrong, and he was not happy with that. Sorry, I can't help spell check, I apologize if it offended him. In any event, since he brought it up, I do have to mention that it's our job to keep students safe. When you cause a disturbance at a school, I've never, in seven years being on a school board, had to, to restrict someone from coming onto school property. We didn't ban him totally. He was restricted on his access, he just had to make phone calls ahead of time to the, to the principal to get access to the school, and he can still do that, and he has parental rights, he's, he's a parent of a student. And it wasn't even this student that's in elementary, it's another student that he was talking about. But in any event, is, is that not the case, Ms. Berry, that he still has access to the school?
Yes, it is.
And that's what was put in the letter, from what I remember reading, because we all voted on it. But I did need to clarify that, I just, I didn't want you to think we're just banning parents left and right, but when they, you know, cause a disturbance out there, we, we have to do something, and it was just a restriction on his access. He can still go to the playground, he's just got to call the principal and say, "I want to go on these dates." Okay, that's fine, well, you can do that. In any event, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Again, I know we're back-to-school time, I'm actually looking forward to it this year. This summer was very, very challenging for my family, so I'm looking to flip over a new leaf and, and move on. I got to see Seaford Elementary again, and I'm, I know people are probably sick of me talking about it, but I'm just really, really excited. I'm grateful for all the tours and all the grace I was shown, for all the questions being asked on behalf of people in Seaford. And again, I'm just really excited for those families to see, to see that building. Got to go to Transportation and welcome our, our new Director of Transportation, got to meet with all the maintenance folks down there, and they're getting those buses ready and finishing all that up, so that was great to celebrate with them. Going to attend all the open houses in the district this coming week, so very, very excited to see families. And again, just the excitement of the kids getting ready to go back to school. I want to encourage parents to get involved, join PTA, join the boosters, join the band boosters, whatever, whatever it is, obviously parental rights with their kids are really, really important, but we also have a responsibility too, and we know that when families are involved, it actually directly translates to student success. So I would just encourage parents to stay involved in any capacity you can. I know one of the things the school division's going to focus on this year is student connectedness, making sure that students aren't just going to school and going home, but are getting connected to a club or a sport and those kinds of things. So I would say parents should encourage their students to get involved in that way as well. I, I also want to encourage families to use Let's Talk. I know that sometimes when I talk to people, they're not even aware that that's our kind of communication system, but it's a button on the school division website. You click on that, you put your email through, and it gets routed magically to the correct person, the correct department. The best part about that is that each staff member is held accountable for their timeliness of a response when you're using that Let's Talk button, and so I think that's really important. It gets elevated straight to the superintendent if, if somebody isn't responding within that very magic window, and I know that's one of the things that we're excited about, we want to make sure we have that timely communication. In response to some of the comments today, I've been told before that I have a grouchy face when I'm listening, so I apologize if that comes across as discourteous, that's not the way I mean it. I take notes when people are speaking, but I am trying to give you eye contact when you're, when you're speaking. For those of you who know me, you know that I'm not a discourteous person at all, so I would never, I would never mean to be that way. Also, I, I am never going to apologize as a board for us having that celebratory time at the beginning of our meetings. People don't have to attend that if they don't want to, but for us, this is not always rainbow and sunshine work that we're doing up here. Sometimes we do have to send hard letters and have hard conversations with people, and we have to battle through those things, but this is the kind of stuff that keeps us going, celebrating these wonderful new staff members that we have. And again, when we have these kids that are coming up here and doing presentations, they're spending their evening on a Monday night, the week before school, telling us about their camps and everything. So I know that this is what fills my bucket, to go forward into the weekend, into the month, and so I appreciate the fact that we do all of these celebrations at the beginning of the school board meeting, because it's not just for us, it's for the community too, to be able to look back on and see all the great things we're doing and celebrate our staff and all the work that's taking place. So, again, just wish everybody a wonderful school year, and can't wait to continue to celebrate all the great things. So, thank you. All right, next we're going to move into our financial matters, and I think Mr. Higginbotham is our new person.
Yes, yes. You know, and, you know, bear with me as we do this, the first, you know, meeting of each year, we have the summer months to, to talk about. There's a very detailed information on Board Docs if anyone wants more information, or they can contact me if they would like to. So we'll start off with consideration of approval for claims certified for payment, and we have claims certified for payment the months of June and July for 2023. For June, our significant expenditures totaled approximately $1.7 million, and these payments went to a variety of different vendors, from Barnes &amp; Noble to Care Solus, Chuck Levens Music, Five Ponds Press, Gateway Education, Goldheart, Wilcox Publishing, H. Mifflin Harcourt, James River Audio, McGraw-Hill, McMillan Publishers, New Horizons, Susan Vogel, the Virginia Peninsula Community College, and the Wisconsin Center for Education, and those for a variety of services, textbooks and things like that. Again, detailed information is on Board Docs if you have questions. Payments for technology totaled approximately $355,000, which include payments to CDW, Cox Communications, and Virginia Business Systems, the majority of that being to CDW for one, new one-to-one devices or to refinish some of those. Food service expenditures, about $792,500, include payments to SEDEXO, the majority of that for the May and June food service operations, and then some to Tyson Foods for that. The payments related to construction and maintenance projects, and we saw many pictures of those projects that were going on this summer, at all of those four main projects in schools here, we have Aces, Centennial Contractors, Harbor Mechanical, Heartland, RRMM Architects, and the Schick Communications Company. And those, again, for our, like TAB Middle School, Seaford, Grafton, Bethel, Grafton Complex, for those things. Payments for administration total approximately $257,600, include payments to the Comerica Bank, Old Point Financial, Rhodes Branding, School Health Corp., and the Virginia Risk Sharing Association, that last one being workers' compensation claims. The payments for operations totaled $223,900, include payments to the Daily Computers, Dominion Energy, Republic Services, and WB Mason Company for basic utility services and cleaning and supplies, things like that. Our significant expenditures for July, the payments related to instruction are $31,400, include payments to music and arts and to VHSL, so our music students can participate in things, and then our athletes, of course, can participate in those VHSL sanctioned events. Payments related to IT totaled $54,400, include payments to CDWG, TRA, and Tyler Technologies. And payments related to administration for July are $70,200 for Lincoln Financial, for 403B contributions, and then the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools, and that's for the, that membership, 2324, for that. We move on to the consideration approval of financial reports for July. The significant changes relating to the operating budget is, for that, for the July revenues, the state revenue is $654,300 higher in fiscal year '24 than it was in fiscal year '23 due to increases in the staff compensation and the hold harmless grocery tax revenue. For the expenditure side of that, we have expenditures and encumbrances for operations and management, or I'm sorry, maintenance, that approximate, that are approximately $420,000 higher in fiscal year '24 than the previous year due to increases in utility expenses and the maintenance supplies. The IT expenditures and encumbrances decreased about $751,000 when compared to July of last year, as fewer computer devices have been purchased for the '23-24 school year. And then the significant changes relating to food service budget is that there is no significant changes in revenue or expenses so far for that. We will see, as we move throughout this year, we'll get more information. So the, next we have consideration of approval for Resolution 23-54, which requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. There are nine items on the resolution totaling $5.38 million, which are all listed in Board Docs, and I go through this very quickly, but we have had this information available, and we've had opportunity to ask questions and things like that. So with that information said, Madam Chair, I move to approve the financial matters as listed.
One second.
Ms. Ford?
Board members, are you available to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You can go ahead and cast your vote.
Oh, there it is.
The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, move into consent count.
So with that information said, Madam Chair, I move to approve the financial matters as listed.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Court members, are you available to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You can go ahead and cast your vote.
Oh, there it is.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, move into consent calendar, and we'll go over this list, and I know that there's, I think, one or two questions over these items. The first is approval of personnel actions. Next is approval of minutes from special meeting and work session on May 8th, regular meeting on May 12th, 2023, a special meeting on May 24th, 2023, a special meeting and a work session on June 5th, 2023, special meetings on June 20, July 20, and August 14th, 2023. And we have approval of donations in the amount of $45,895.54. Approval of fiscal year 2025 budget, proposed budget calendar. Approve to authorize a superintendent to execute the agreement between the county school board of York County and the York Coast and Sheriff's Office for the 2324 school year. Approval of a motion to authorize James Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, Candy Skinner, Chief Academic Officer, William Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, or David Wright, Chief Human Resources Officer, to sign for the division superintendent in the absence of the division superintendent as of August 21st, 2023. We have approval of provisions to the program of studies. Approval of FY '24 pay plan updates. Approval of a motion to authorize a superintendent to execute an agreement between the county school board of York County and Robinson County Resources. And again, I go through those quickly, but we've had a chance to review each one of those. They've been up on board docs for us to review. I know we had a quick question before I asked for a motion to approve.
Yeah, I had a quick question on the personnel actions. It seemed like there was a long list on that personnel actions, but I think that was just cleaning up the roster, is that?
That's correct. Yes.
From what we had, like, we have a lot of people that they may have been a substitute, but we can't get them to respond any longer, and they're still in roles, we're just cleaning up those roles, so that's why.
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to reiterate that, so if the public looks on board docs and sees that information, they'll go, "Wait, what's this?" I already answered or asked a question for them, so thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as listed.
I move that we approve the consideration of approval of the consent calendar as listed.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, move into our action items, and first we have a consideration of approval of Resolution 23-57, a resolution declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with certain capital improvements. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Mr. Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, is going to provide some comments related to this resolution. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, this resolution is tied to our receipt of $544,000 of state technology funds. This is an annual resolution that's required. This is also matched by $108,800 as our local match to this grant program. These funds that we receive every year are deposited into our Technology Reserve Fund and are used for our one-to-one devices for our students.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
All right. I need a motion in a second to approve Resolution 23-57.
I move to approve Resolution 23-57, a resolution declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with certain capital improvements.
I'll second.
Mr. Richardson or Ms. Myatt? Ms. Myatt? Okay. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve Resolution 23-57. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, move into policy discussion, and we have none. Moving on to policy first reading, also have none. So we'll move into policy second reading. We have policy discussion, expedited approval of policy JO, student records. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. I'm going to ask Dr. Aaron Butler, our Director of Student Services, to share some information related to the expedited approval of policy file JO, student records.
Ms. Goff, if you could assist.
There was something up there. It's in board docs.
We might need a minute. It's still in Teams, which we can't access here.
Okay. Can we take just a quick recess while we load this?
Yep, quick recess.
Yeah. Even I was.
We are back in session. We've remedied our technical difficulty. Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for this opportunity to propose revisions to school board policy JO, student Two Virginia codes frame the revisions to policy JO. Virginia Code 1-240.1, Rights of Parents, which states a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. And Virginia Code 22.1-23.3 requires the Virginia Department of Education to develop model policies for local school boards on the treatment of transgender students in K-12 school public schools in compliance with Virginia law. Virginia Code enumerates four areas where the Department of Education must provide model guidance for local school divisions. In July of this year, the Department of Education published new model policies related to the treatment of transgender students. As previously stated, school boards must adopt policies that are consistent with model policies issued by the Virginia Department of Education. Board members, you will remember when the General Assembly amended the code in 2020 and model policies were provided in 2021, we reviewed all of the policies to determine if the division was in compliance with the model guidance. We have followed the same process with the revised guidance tonight. In the eight domains which were issued by the Virginia Department of Education for nondiscrimination laws, we were in compliance through policy GBA, JFHA, prohibition against harassment and retaliation, which includes sexual orientation and gender identity as protected groups. Under maintenance of a safe and supportive learning environment, prevention of and response to bullying and harassment, we were in compliance using policy GBA, JFHA, as previously mentioned. Policy CZ, which is the Student Code of Conduct, specifically the conduct code and bullying reporting section that's in the student handbook that was presented to you back in June. And then under policy GCL, professional staff development, there are several modules under our Vector Solutions that deal with bullying as well as boundary invasion. All staff are required to have these completed by August the 25th. In addition to that, the legislation was also updated to say that within 24 hours of actual notice of a bullying allegation, school officials must notify the parents of both parties. So all this information was updated. Maintenance of student records, the division was in compliance under policy JO. Student records, the school division is required to maintain accurate and complete records for every student, and the courts was federal and state laws. Under the identification of students and protection of student privacy and confidentiality, again, policy JO, student records, maintains that staff follow all confidentiality standards established through school board policy, state, and federal law. In addition, policy IJ, Guidance and Counseling Program, stipulates that information and records of personal social counseling will be kept confidential and separate from a student's educational records. For the enforcement of sex-based dress codes and student participation in sex-specific school activities, events, and facilities, the York County School Division dress code remains gender neutral and aligns with Virginia Code and the 2023-24 Student Handbook and Conduct Code. Policy JFCB, sportsmanship, ethics, and integrity for school athletic programs must comply with Virginia High School League regulations. York County School Division does comply with this provision with federal laws with regard to accessing school facilities. And policy JB allows all students in the building to access a single-use restroom facility. Under the compliance with identification of students, there were two revisions that were offered in order to parallel the model policies from the Virginia Department of Education. One was that students must be referred to by their name, pronoun, and gender assigned at birth unless the legal guardian or parent provides a written request instructing school officials to use a preferred name, pronoun, and/or gender. In addition, division staff and students cannot be required to use a preferred name, pronoun, and/or gender if it violates their constitutional rights. Thank you for this opportunity to present revisions to policy JO, student records. I'm available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Questions?
I have, I've got one, and this might be for Ms. Berry. I've had some people in my district who've reached out just asking for some clarification when model policies come pushed down from the VDOE and things like that. What is the, the expectation is that you create your policy, you accept the policy, or you incorporate it into your existing policy? But there was just a question about if a school division doesn't bring their policies to be in compliance, what repercussions, is there a liability, legal repercussions or anything with it?
The code does not have any repercussions listed. However, the York County School Division, by making these amendments, will be in full compliance with model guidance.
Okay. I think there was just some question about, because the model policies come down, you know, from the state, and, you know, you've seen some divisions who have accepted and some who have, you know, rejected and amended their current ones. So I think there was just some confusion as to if it comes down, what's the legal recourse or anything like that? So I just appreciate the clarification.
And I guess we never know if they're going to do any type of civil penalty or penalties on budgeting or anything like that. I guess they could always do that as well.
At this time, there's nothing listed in the statute?
Right, but that could change.
And this happens often, where the VDOE pushes a model policy out for divisions to use as reference, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
So I get, my question is that a lot of our policies already had the parental piece in it, getting parental permission or having parents send in a form or whatever, so that's why it's easier for us to be compliant with the model policy, because we'd already done a lot of that work ahead of time in our policy, correct?
Correct. We've had a form that requires parental signature, and we work with parents on a case-by-case basis personally with the family on these types of issues.
Now, I don't know that we had the piece in there about the religious exemption for teachers, for example, to comply.
No, that is new, and that is part of the new model guidance that we're following.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think there is kind of some misunderstanding. People think that you just take this entire document, and you copy it and you paste it, and you have that as kind of like a standalone document, but the state does say that we can actually incorporate all of the pieces and parts of that into our existing policy, correct? And that's why we're doing that?
Yes, we, I can defer to Mrs. Berry, but as long as we're consistent with our policies and we comply with that.
That's correct. As long as we are consistent, we're fine.
Or more comprehensive, correct?
We could be more comprehensive, yes.
And just to clarify, the one thing in there, you said that all students have access to single-use restroom facilities in all the buildings?
Yes, sir. That's one of the things under policy JB that we grant for equal access to all school facilities, including restrooms. And for a single-use restroom, that's something that our maintenance director is working with schools now to make sure they're all identified, the single-use restrooms which are in the buildings. All of our buildings have those. Usually, they're typically in the hallway, and they're working on signage to make sure there's very clearly identified which ones are the single-use restrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Expedited to be in compliance as soon as possible.
I wish you'd have done your presentation first tonight.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of expedited approval of policy JO.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the expedited approval of policy file JO. You may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we'll move into policy discussion and expedited approval of new policy file JJAE, heat-related illness in student athletes. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, is going to share some information.
Is that actually Dr. Butler?
Excuse me, I stand corrected. It's going to be Dr. Butler. Dr. Butler's going to share some information related to the expedited approval of policy JJAE, heat-related illness in student athletes. Dr. Butler?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of board, Dr. Shandor. Policy JJAE has been developed to comply with Virginia Code and align with the model guidance provided by the Virginia Department of Education related to heat-related illness in student athletes. Per code, school divisions must have policies in place to inform and educate coaches, student athletes, and the parents and guardians of student athletes on the nature and risk of heat-related illness. This policy is in alignment with Virginia Department of Education model policy. There currently is not a parallel VSBA policy. However, this policy has been reviewed by the school board attorney. All middle and high schools have athletic trainers provided by Riverside Health Service to educate coaches and support student athletes who exhibit signs of heat-related illness.
And I would have thought our trainers would monitor that or would have monitored that, but I guess it's good to have the policy just to reiterate and make sure everybody's on board with it, so.
And I believe there's also VHSL regulations for temperature and heat and stuff like that for the type of activities that can go on outside during that time too, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And normally, in our department, Mrs. Parr or Dr. Harley will send that information out to schools to remind our athletic directors of those provisions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. I need a motion in a second to approve the expedited updates to new policy JJAE, heat-related illness in student athletes.
I move to approve the expedited approval of new policy file JJAE, the heat-related illness in student athletes.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the expedited approval of the policy file JJAE. Board members, you may cast your vote. And I'm going to go ahead and read the vote because we lost our board docs once we switched our presentation. So, Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Ms. Garalt?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to have our report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. I don't have anything to report this morning. This morning? It's late. It feels like this morning.
Couple more hours.
Before this evening, I shared the information during our summer events in my earlier presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, as a reminder, our next work session will be held here at York Hall on Monday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, and have a great week.